Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the May 25th meeting of the Portland City Council, which please call the roll.
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman.
Here.
Novick.
Fritz.
Here.
Hales. Here. Good morning, everyone. We have communications items up front as usual, then we have several time certens, including proclamations and our administrative rules for ban the box. There have been some requests for items to be pulled to the regular calendar from the consent calendar. Let me go through those, see if there are any others. I have requests for 541, 544, and 546, and 549. So 541, 544, 546, 549 are being pulled to the regular calendar unless there are any requests for any more. Okay? So let's proceed with Communications Item 533, please.
533, request of Frederick Allen Maxwell to address council regarding the Salvation Navy's new course. He contacted us, he is not able to make it.
Oh, all right. Let's take 534.
Request of Malcolm J. Chaddick to address council regarding missed opportunities. Been informed he is not here either.
All right. 535.
Request of Barbara Kite to address council regarding demolition, infill, and density.
Good morning. Come on up.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Thank you for this opportunity to let an ordinary citizen be heard about some very major concerns in this city and specifically in my life. Vic Rimmers is holding my life hostage. The ransom is $700,000. I live in fear of what is coming if it isn't paid. I believe we're all connected and that this connection is being destroyed, street by street, neighborhood by neighborhood. I believe that if one of us is not being treated fairly, all of us are being denied rights. I'm forced to move. I'm just one person who feels the pain of many who have called to tell me that their voices are not being heard, that they tell me that their lives have been destroyed. I feel mine is about to be. I am being forced to move. I live in my dream house. It's next door to 7707 Southeast Alder, a 1908 home removed from the HRI list, even though it was ranked. The loophole took away the 120 days we would have had to have some meaningful talks about destruction to our lives and possible solutions and alternatives. It is going to be demolished. And Vic Rimmers said he would replace it with 12 condos, three stories high in a single-family block that has eight-century-old homes with no parking. I'm scared. Every morning I wake up, I hear a truck go by, thinking, "This is the day they're coming to cut down the 10 trees next door." Some of them spruce, some of them cedars. There's no warning. Could I please have a warning? I'm scared. I get panic attacks. I'm terrified, terrified, that the four trees against my fence will have to be, end up falling on my property. Because if he's going to build 12 condos, the roots and the branches will have to be cut, half of them, that will weaken the tree. According to a certified arborist, they will weaken, they will fall. They will demolish my 1904 Delano Brothers' house. They will possibly injure me. A strong wind can just do it. But they will die eventually. They're too weak. A house on the block was up for sale. Somebody found out 12 condos. They backed out. Devaluation is happening. I'm forced to move. We all bought homes on Southeast Alder with the idea of continuing the single-family community feel and the adherence to the look of the homes and the quality of life in that place, a place to raise our children, to retire. I'd like to retire there. Please. My block will soon be a replica of Division. All the condos and apartments will be there. Everyone on that block is afraid we will have to move. We're two blocks away from Stark. Why is Alder R1? It's a mistake. The zoning is a mistake. We all make mistakes. It is not meant for that block. The zoning laws talk about preserving existing housing and encouraging new development that is compatible, that word, compatible, with and supportive of the positive qualities of residential neighborhoods. But R1 will leave us with nothing but condos and apartments and traffic. I know if that happens, that three-story building goes up, everything is gone. And all this can go away if we pay a ransom of $700,000. And there are three other houses that are up for ransom, too, in this community. Rick Rimmers said $700,000, and, you know, you can have your life back. Please deny the destruction. Please change the zoning. Please help this community. Tell us you care.
Thank you for, thank you for giving voice to this. There are a lot of people with these concerns.
A lot of them.
If you're, if you have a minute while you're here, if you could stop in my office and talk to Camille Trummer.
Sure.
Camille, upstairs on the third floor. It would be helpful if we got some more details from you to her.
I think there were packets given out about this.
Okay. All right. Well, if you do have a chance, though, just to get to meet Camille, it would be good for her to make a mention.
I much thank you, all of you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate this.
Thank you very much. Okay, 536.
Request of Mary Ann Schwab to address council regarding support for elders in action.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, City Council members and Mayor Charlie Hales, who recently declared the month of May Older Americans Month. You've honored Elders in Action staff and older volunteers for achieving the mission to assure vibrant community through active involvement with older adults. I'd like to take it a couple steps farther. Mayor Hales tells us his best older Americans live in their homes for as long as possible, and I believe it starts with you and me, by stepping back to pay close attention to the seniors living next door or down the block. If you notice a broken basement window, a missing step on the stairs, there are helping hands available without cost to the homeowner. You can offer this list to your neighbor and even help them fill out the applications. Unlimited choices, rebuilding Together Portland, Reach, Community Development, Habitat for Humanity, Meals on Wheels, Oregon Food Bank, located in the Gateway area, PAX, helping people since 1934. They run a health clinic, a thrift store, and a pantry that serves 1,400 families once a month. Random acts of kindness continue with each of us. Might I suggest mowing the lawn next door or pulling the trash bins down? And don't be surprised when the elder pulls the empty ones back up. As for MAS, I heard Mrs. Santa Claus from Peacock Lane had moved to an assisted-living facility. I went to visit her. Apparently, there's a federal relegation regarding facilities provide fresh fruit. Little wonder, when opening the bag of Hood River Bing cherries, she said apples, oranges, bananas. So help me, if I eat one more banana, I'll grow a monkey's tail. For the next 19 months, my visit saved her $8 in weekly fees by simply hanging up the laundry. Every Saturday, I was there to visit my friend of 40 years who retired from Monmouth County. Unlike Mitch Abbott's Tuesdays with Maury, I did not take notes, yet I'll treasure her stories. Older Americans fixed, living on fixed social security. My friend's mother lived 65 years at 96 Brooker Hip. Her house was sold for $206,000 in Montevilla. She moved to a long-term care facility, $8,000 a month, plus an $8 point system. These fees are rising so fast, within five years, her house money was exhausted. Medicaid stepped in until she died at 103. Yes, she was sharp as a tack to the end and enjoyed a visit. The woman on Peacock Lane who sold her house, I don't blame her. These are going to happen to her. She's 88 years old. Within a short time, her husband died, and I don't think she was treated respectfully by Vic Ramens. The bully on Peacock Lane. So, and I'd like to go one more step here, and that is, those living on Peacock Lane don't have the resources to pay the bully off. He wants $350,000 to purchase a skinny lot. And short of our, and he's done it before. He did it in Peacock Lane. You've heard the woman ahead of me how many times. Our fabric of our neighborhoods and landscaping is being torn apart, puzzle piece by puzzle piece. He laughed all the way to the bank after getting, selling the sequoia trees, didn't take a hammer to a sixpenny nail. City Council, please be aware seniors are at risk for financial exploration when the buyer merely is an agent for the investor willing to purse the corner house or prime real estate. And when do we declare restrictive covenants come into play? How can we fight back? Say, "My house can't, you can buy my house, but it won't be demolished for 10 years."
Thank you very much.
We need the legalese with this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and this, we need to pay attention to the residential care facility's patient-client ratio. There is one person to 20 staff. I have a friend that didn't get showered for 10 days. We moved her out of that $6,500 a month facility. Thank you.
Wow, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, 537, please.
Request of Barbara Souter to address council regarding advocating for seniors.
Good morning. Welcome.
Thanks for giving me this time. I'm not going to ask you for money. I'm not going to ask for zoning change. All I'm here to do is to share some information with you and hopefully give you some ways that you can share the information. I'm a volunteer with the Oregon Long-Term Care Ombudsman's Office. We don't sell insurance. We're a state agency, and what we do is we advocate for seniors that are in long-term care. So this woman over here who talked about her friend that hadn't had a shower for 10 days, that's the type of thing that our ombudsman help with, is we go to the facility leaders then and say, "Look, one shower every 10 days, that really doesn't cut it. I know you're a business. I know you have issues, but people are people, and this is their home." This is for a senior, the long-term care facility they're in, that's their home and probably the last home they're going to have. So we advocate for things like move-out notices, so that if a 90-year-old woman in a nursing home is told she has to leave, our advocates go in and we work with the facility, but mostly we work with the senior to make sure that their rights are observed, that they're getting what they want out of it. We may not be able to keep the woman in that nursing home because maybe they can't give her the care that she needs, but we make sure she understands why. We make sure that she goes someplace that she's comfortable and that she doesn't feel like she's being victimized by the system one more time. We don't invent issues. We visit residents in the facilities, and there's lots of facilities in Portland. You go out to southeast Portland, and every street you drive on, it feels like there's another adult care home. We talk to the residents. We find out what their issues are. Sometimes staff talks to us and tells us about issues. Sometimes we hear from families. Sometimes we even have an administrator that asks us to intercede. So why do we advocate? You know, my mother, all of her life, was a troublemaker, and she could advocate not only for herself, but for everybody she came in contact with. But she's 90 years old now. She's lost her vision, and she can't advocate for herself anymore. And she's just like a lot of seniors. They're afraid that they're going to be evicted if they complain. They may not understand the laws, so they just take what they're given, or they may have lost some of their capacity and can no longer advocate for themselves. So why am I here? I wanted to share this information with you for a couple reasons. You may have a friend who's in long-term care. You may run into somebody, a constituent, or a friend, or a family member who says, "I was talking to so-and-so, and they were complaining because their mother hadn't had a shower for 10 days." Well, they need to call and talk to the ombudsman. You can refer them to the state office. Somebody will get in touch with them. You may also have somebody that is concerned about looking for a good volunteer opportunity. This is it. Mayor Hales, you're not coming back? Here's a great thing for you to do in retirement.
All right. I'm not retiring, but I'll consider volunteering. What, thank you. No, well, one thing we can all do is we can put this info up prominently on our own websites, and we'll certainly do that in our office. So again, it's www.oregon.gov/LTCO, and people can go to that website and get in touch with the folks there that do this work. So we appreciate you shining a light on it today. We'll see what we can do to help do that.
Barbara, can I just ask you one question?
Sure.
And again, thank you for joining us. How do you work with Elders in Action locally? So that's one of our partners. Do, does, if Elders in Action volunteers, if they become aware of one of these issues, do they refer it to the ombudsman?
Yes, but Elders in Action deals with people who are still in their own home.
Right.
And we work only with residents that are in long-term care, so nursing homes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here.
Thanks for your time.
We'll help get the word out. Okay, I think we can take up our consent calendar minus the items we're going to deal with later and then go on to time certens. Again, no other changes to consent. All right, let's take a vote on the balance of the consent calendar, please.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Hales. Aye. Okay, time certain, 538.
Proclaim May 30, 2016, to be Vanport Day of Remembrance in Portland.
So we have some distinguished community leaders here to talk about this this morning, and maybe I can ask them to come up. We might need one more chair if all four are here, Laura LaForte, Renee Mitchell, Damaris Webb, and Bee Gilmore. So just pull up another chair if you're all four here. Welcome, and thank you for being here for this important point to remember our city's So while you're getting settled, I'll read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas our view of history shapes the way we view our present, and in order to understand where we are going, it's critical that we understand where we have come from. And whereas Vanport, at its peak population of over 40,000, was Oregon's second-largest city and the country's largest public housing project. It was built in 110 days, complete with two school complexes, commercial stores, a movie theater, post office, fire station, hospital, library, recreation center, and sheriff's office. And whereas Vanport, a segregated city with a degree of racial harmony, was an unintentional experiment in racial integration, as up to 28% of its residents who traveled from all corners of our great nation were African-American. When at the time, Vanport was built in 1942, the entire state of Oregon had fewer than 2,000 African-Americans. And whereas the lowest point in Vanport was 15 feet below the river's water level, once the railroad fell broke on May 30, 1948, the resulting flood destroyed the whole town of Vanport, whose multiracial population of whites, blacks, Japanese, and Native Americans was down to about 18,500 people. And whereas a dedicated group of Portland residents have organized an inaugural festival to honor and celebrate Vanport as an essential and often forgotten chapter in Portland's history, as it was the catalyst for the racial mosaic that now exists in Portland and around the state of Oregon. Now, therefore, I, Charlie Hales, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim May 30, 2016, to be Vanport Day of Remembrance, and urge all residents to observe this day." So let's take a moment to recognize our history. Welcome this panel.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for inviting us here. We just wanted to make sure that we...
Oh, so you are Renee.
Oh, Renee Mitchell. I'm one of the co-artistic directors for the Vanport Mosaic Festival, and I'm joined here by Laura LaForte, who is also one of our co-artistic directors, and Bee Gilmore, who is a survivor of the Vanport flood, and Susan Vardell, who has led guides, guided tours of Vanport. And this is certainly a community effort. This is a collaboration of folks who came together, and it's based on things that have happened before, efforts in order to tell these stories, in order to make sure that people remembered Vanport. Vanport was kind of basically our Katrina, before there ever was a Katrina. And so we need, as more and more people are moving into the city, we need to remind them of the history of what has come before. We're very, very thankful that the city council and the mayor have recognized that there is a wonderful story that we need to continue to tell here, that kind of shapes even today our interactions and our ability to kind of connect and build the community. And so we're so thankful that you're acknowledging the Day of Vanport, and I'd just like to let Laura say a few words before we give it over to Bee.
I would prefer if Ms. Gilmore goes.
My name is Beatrice Gilmore, and I am a former resident of Vanport. I appreciate your description of the city. It was, as you described, but there's a lot more to it. The importance of, to me, of having this proclamation and calling May 30, 2016, Vanport Day, is that the flood washed all of that culture and those people into Portland. And that is a good foundation, that was a good foundation for where we are now, the arts, the music, and Portland being what it is. So it was a good city. We didn't anticipate a flood, but that's what washed it into Portland. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's a really interesting way to put it. Thank you. Good morning.
I have some excellent company here, some people who are passionate about sharing the history of Vanport. When I first started working for the city 22 years ago, in the area where Vanport was, I was astounded that no one talked about it. There was nothing marking it, and that it was sort of this little history of water and land, and increasingly, the story of 100,000 people who lived there, had kids there in the five schools and the six nurseries, et cetera, et cetera. And I look at what the city is becoming today, and how people are moving here and looking for jobs and looking for homes, and I think there are a lot of parallels, and we have a story from the past to share. Thank you very, thank, thank you very much. I hope you'll join us for the entire festival, and on the 30th, we will be on the site as well.
So we officially open on Friday with a celebration at the Interstate Firehouse Cultural Center, which is a city-owned property, and we invite you and all city residents to come and participate in some of the activities. There are a lot of opportunities to access this story, including a play called Vanport in the Flood. Damaris Webb, who is also one of the co-artistic directors, is here, and she is directing and producing that play. There's also music, and we're also including youth poets, because we want this to be a multi-generational celebration of community. And so there are also films that are five-minute stories of survivors and also former residents of Vanport. There are many, many ways to access opportunities to learn about this story, and so we invite the city council, who is, we're going to look forward to seeing you there, as well as residents of Portland, and they can get more information at www.vanportmosaic.org. There is a calendar there and ways to engage and get tickets. So we invite you to all to participate.
VanportMosaic.com.
Yes.
Dot org.
Dot org, yes, thank you.
Well, good. Well, we really appreciate you all being here, appreciate you putting this together. We'd love to take a photo with you if you'd like.
Oh, absolutely.
If I may add just one more clause.
Sorry.
Oh, no, no. I don't enjoy speaking, so that's all good. But I am a storyteller, and the project that I'm leading as part of the festival is the Oral History Project. So it all starts with stories, and so this is a celebration of individual perspectives that gives us a sense of the larger narrative, and we want to honor each, and each one of them, even if sometimes they contradict each other, but that's, that's history. And to me, especially as a newcomer, you know, what, what's incredible about these stories, it's that it tells, it tells the story of people overcoming their differences, finding in the same, finding themselves in the same place and build their lives, their hopes, in the same exact way, the same way we do it today. And somehow, this shared humanity, I think... And somehow, this shared humanity, I think, is the best message that this project is bringing to this city, and it's an invitation to, to see what we can do similarly today, to overcome our differences and, and recognize that we all kind of want the same things. And so it's, it all starts with stories and listening to each other. Thank you.
You know, I think I have a suggestion. I think there's some other council members that want to comment as well. The Oregon Historical Society obviously just got a vote of confidence from the community, and also has done a good job of trying to put together materials, stories from the World War II era, including about Vanport. And maybe this has already happened, but Ms. Gilmore, if you wouldn't mind somebody putting a TV camera in front of you, I think your story ought to be recorded and, and added to that collection. And other folks that were there, I mean, the stories that you have are precious to us as a community. And so I think it would be really useful to the whole community so that people do know the history, to have both the work that you're doing, the events that you're putting on this weekend, and the personal stories, you know, recorded and added to that collection that is all of our collection at the Historical Society, because 50 years from now, 100 years from now, this story still needs to be told. So I want to encourage, if that hasn't already happened, and I know it has in some cases, but the more of that, the more of that the better.
I do count, because Ms. Gilmore's story is, is really powerful, and she actually talked really, in such a powerful way, about the parallel with Katrina and what it all means.
Yeah.
So it definitely, these are the voices that we want to honor during the festival. We're going to have three screenings of these oral histories.
Oh, great.
We've been able to- Mayor, just by coincidence, we have Ms. Gilmore and a TV camera right here. And people watching on Channel 30, so-
There we go. It's already been recorded today.
If you could maybe just give us a short teaser, so that, to encourage people to, would you tell us a little of your story?
Yeah, what was it like that day?
That day was the day that I realized I could die. My father and three children were crammed in the car. We were rushing to get up the hill to Denver Avenue to get out of Vanport, thinking that we would return and get things that was precious to us, and after the flood. And on the way up, I will never forget, I looked back out the back of the car, and I saw the wall of water coming, and that's when I realized this is, could be the end. That's pretty traumatic.
Boy, that's a pretty powerful story. Thank you. Other questions, comments?
Mayor, thank you for bringing this proclamation. Obviously, we all look forward to participating on Monday. And when, when you were engaging the mayor about where, what would be the proper repository for these stories, you know, if Oregon Historical Society doesn't become the repository, I hope Portland State does. And I'm thinking Portland State because of the receptivity they've already shown, for example, to the Rutherford Family Collection. And the, we have the city archives are at Portland State, and Portland State's library has a number of people that really care about our history. And, and I, I love this idea of storytelling, and if we don't tell those stories and document, then we're going to forget them. And at PSU, you know, through the capstone program, students and faculty have been taking, have been preserving the stories. And so I hope between PSU and the Oregon Historical Society, there's a natural landing place, and I hope we can engage future capstones in continuing to do the inquiry. I know my wife Patricia, given her history with the capstone program, would want to be involved in that. But we are, we, we forget our history so easily in this country, and Vanport means many things to different people, but it's a conversation we should continue to have. And thank you so much for shining a light on it and bringing the arts and culture to the table as well. We're excited to join you on Monday.
We appreciate that encouragement.
Thank you all. Well, we'd love to invite you and any of your, any of your folks that are involved in the festival or otherwise here on this item to come join us and take a photo and add that to the history as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) (inaudible) Going to move on from one, one moment in history to another, and talk about Ban the Box. So would you read item 539, please?
Adopt administrative rules for Chapter 23.10, removing barriers to employment, and authorize the city attorney to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Bureau of Labor and Industry at an amount not to exceed $25,000.
So Rachel Wiggins and Judy Prosper, who are the keepers of this flame in our work on Ban the Box, are here, and we appreciate your good work and here to walk us through the proposed rules.
Good morning, council members. Mayor Hales, I am Judy Prosper, Deputy City Attorney, and here with Rachel Wiggins, as you state. Before I start, so I don't forget, I do want to thank two colleagues who also helped get these administrative rules written. That's Denis Vanyé and Lynn Vu, I think she's in the room. So we're here today with the administrative rules. There was a review period per the ordinance, which took place between April 11 and May 2. We received very few comments during that time, but did continue to receive some comments after that, and as a result of that, we would like to, before we start, we have two amendments proposed. One is the definition of a volunteer, which came up in some of our conversations with our HR partners. And then, because we are imperfect, another, a little Scrivener's error in Exhibit A on the Criminal History Matrix as shown. So as I go through, bear in mind that those things hopefully will become a part of-
Okay, do we have, do we have a written version of those amendments, or?
They were circulated with offices. You should have one in your book.
They show up as a memo? Oh, there they are. I see them.
Yeah, dated May 24.
There we go. All right. Yep. Okay, so, so why don't, at the outset, before we start, I'll move the amendments.
Second.
And then let's accept the amendments, and then move on into your presentation. So roll call to accept the amendments, please.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to be brief today. I just want to point out a few things. The rules are there, and they're, they're drafted with definitions, and there's a couple of exhibits, the Criminal History Matrix, which is a two-pager, and a sample letter of rescission of conditional offer of employment. So I just want to point out a few things. The first is the timing. The city of Portland decided to go further than the state law with the timing of when employers could inquire into an applicant's criminal history. The state says it can happen at the interview phase. We've moved in Portland to the conditional offer of employment. That's the, the standard, conditional offer of employment. As the rules state, during, for, for the, your average hire, the nature-time-nature test, that's found in 2310030, the nature and gravity of the criminal offense, the time that has elapsed, and the nature of the employment held or sought, is going to be the standard timing for most hires. If you fall under an exception, 23-dash-dot-10-dot-040, either an outright exception, as I call them, your state or federal, local law, and there's a corresponding rule that requires consideration, your law enforcement agency, the criminal justice system, or an employer seeking a non-employee volunteer, the terms of the code don't apply to you, the provisions of the code, pardon me. If you do fall under an exception under B, that's capital B, there is a Criminal History Matrix that can guide you in making your decision. The Criminal History Matrix is not a bar. The Criminal History Matrix is a guide. It is a way that you can look, something you can look to, to say, okay, if I fall, if the crime falls in this category, I do not have to hire the person, and I would not violate. I also don't have to do a nature-time-nature test for those convictions. So if we go through the rules, to clarify a little bit, thank you, Rachel.
Mm-hmm.
Here we go. So under rules, what we're calling RB for removing barriers to employment, 2.04, there's, number four talks about sensitive positions, and there are a few categories of sensitive positions. Positions having direct access or the provision of services to children, the elderly, and persons with disabilities. That is the most protected class of folks, and you'll go to the matrix, and you'll see under categories, if you go to the matrix for those, provisions of those kinds of services, you'll get that you have to look at A, B, and any sex crimes or their equivalent. If you move down to a category C, which is positions with folks who are in drug or alcohol treatment or substance abuse, they're sort of a lesser, I wouldn't say lesser standard, but it is understood that these kinds of rehab and care, sometimes the best person to help someone in rehab is someone who's been through rehab, and they may have a criminal history that's related to that. So that's why the matrix is not as strict, so to speak, for those categories. All other convictions have, will have to go through the nature-time-nature test. If it's not on the matrix, it needs to go through nature-time-nature. We have the volunteer definition. Another thing that I would like to point out is the code authorized the city attorney to enter into a contract with Bolle and decide on additional penalties. What's in there now is the Bolle, any remedies by Bolle, and then a $5,000 penalty per occurrence that goes to the city. We came up with that number because there were some comments, I think one came from Commissioner Novick at one point, that said, if the fine is too low, it won't have very much of a deterrent effect. So we decided on that number. The contract with Bolle is, we're working out the last tweaks. It will be less than we think the sick leave, so we have it at a not to exceed 25,000. There just, there's no counting, there's a whole lot less, and this kind of civil rights case is something that Bolle is much more familiar with doing. So we'll get that contract signed and ready to be enforced as of July 1. And the last thing I'd like to say is we are preparing some trainings. Once we know exactly what the final rules are, after you've given us your approval, we are going to have some trainings for our internal HR partners and all folks in the city of Portland who do any hiring. Then we will present to the private sector. We already have someone who is willing to host, one of our private sector partners, and then we'll do a training or two for the advocates as well. So-
Judy, I have a couple of questions.
Please.
And thank you for the clarity of your presentation. I think I got all that. One of the things I think we're all aware of is that there's going to be a transition period where folks figure out what they're required to do. And I think particularly for the businesses that are covered but are, are still small and smaller in size, it will require some education and, and some practice. And so, you know, the general view is you don't bring the hammer down early. You, you, you do the education and the phase in, and then you give people a chance to get to do it the right way, and then if there's problems, you bring the hammer down. So my first question is, what are the transition rules here in terms of, is there a period of time in which we're explicitly less likely to use a, an enforcement tool versus an education tool? That's question number one. And the second question is, and I'm looking at a letter we got from the Portland Business Alliance, that's how, that's how I got this issue was flagged. Why are we proposing to increase the penalty scheme at Bolle to include a $5,000 fine? What's the logic behind that?
Okay, so thanks for those questions. Enforcement versus education. We are contracting with Bolle to do the enforcement. Right now, the way the contract is written, and as I said, we're still working out the final tweaks, there is no sort of gap transitional period. It is enforceable as of July 1. If that's something you're suggesting, we can definitely look at that and come back, and I can come back and talk to you about what kinds of timing you'd like to see, because, again, I think it's a substantially similar, so if that, I think that's something that would be substantially similar to this contract. If you wanted, if you wanted to suggest a transition period, like, let's say, from July 1 to 60, 30, 60, or 90 days out, we will not enforce penalties, but there will be more education or letters. I definitely think that's something we can entertain.
I don't know how Bolle balances that, because on the one hand, you don't want to give people, the bad actors, a pass, that people just say, oh, I got a safe harbor, and I'm going to, I'm going to discriminate like crazy, versus giving Bolle the discretion to treat, you know, offenses within the first, during the ramp-up period differently than later. Because what, ultimately, we're not going to win this battle by enforcing. We're going to win this battle by educating and getting people to do the right thing, because, you know, Bolle could hire 1,000 people and do enforcement all the time. The, the secret is to get everyone to voluntarily agree to do the right thing. So I, I don't, I don't know how, what their experience has been. You don't want to create a period where we encourage the bad actors to get a pass. On the other hand, I think you want to have a phase in where people are like, more likely to get a remedial action rather than a fine for not doing it correctly, where there's a shot, where there's a showing that they acted, where they otherwise acted in good faith. But the $5,000 penalty, I, I'm not aware that the council indicated we wanted to enhance the existing enforcement scheme. So again, why, why do we think bumping it up to $5,000 in this one case is appropriate?
I'll, I'll tell you from where that came. We, I'm looking at this, I forgot my copy, so I'd have to look at it online. So under the enforcement provision 2310060, the paragraph D talks about, you know, Bolle having enforcement powers, and we're enforcing them, and it says that we can, and this is, you all will decide today, the complaint may be entitled to any remedies provided under ORS 659A, 820 through 865, and their implementing regulations, and any additional remedies, provided that those remedies are specified in the agreement between the city and the Bolle commissioner. So there was some discretion, or when you set, sent these rules off to the city attorney's office to be crafted, there was some sort of open discussion about whether or not there should be additional penalties. In looking at other jurisdictions, in looking at, again, taking into consideration Commissioner Novick's comments about if the fine or penalty is too small, it may not have the deterrent effect, we came up with this amount. If it's not an amount that, that you're comfortable with, or you think it's too penal, that's definitely something that we can adjust.
So I could, I could argue either side of this, and I used, this used to be an area where I practiced law. Here's a thought. I'm not comfortable changing the penalty scheme yet, because I don't have any evidence that we're getting compliance or non-compliance. And I think that, so, so in other words, I can't evaluate this. This might be too low, if, if you come back and say, we have the kind of compliance rate that we're seeing with Airbnb, for example. I'm just, I'm being, I'm exaggerating, but, so I, I'm disinclined to set an arbitrary cap or floor on an additional civil penalty. until I understand whether Bolley and the oversight body believe that people are getting the message and doing the right thing.
It's up to.
Yeah, it's up to, but it's in addition. But it ends up being an additional penalty that was not originally prescribed. And I would feel more comfortable setting that at such time when we get a report on how we're doing with enforcement, rather than just putting a number in. I don't think the case has been made that we needed the additional stick until we've had maybe year-one experience with how is this working. And then, again, as I say, $5,000 may be too low if people are just willfully disregarding it. But I don't have a basis to evaluate it. And I don't know that was part of the conversation that we were going to increase, increase the penalty.
Other questions, thoughts?
Well, speaking of a phase-in period, I think that makes sense. I mean, we did that with paid sick leave as well. So I don't know what the right period, but I'll throw out 60 days. That seems like an appropriate phase-in period.
I just want to clarify. Is that, is that something you would like us to negotiate in the contract, that there will be none? Or, as Commissioner Fish mentioned, just as we speak to Bolley about how we would like this to be enforced and going forward, because we will be doing our education piece together with Bolley, since they'll be enforcing it, we want to sort of have the spirit of, I just want to, I want to have a clarification from council whether you want it to be a contract provision or whether you would like it to be sort of, in the spirit of not bringing down the hammer on the first day, we want to, we're going to allow you to have this discretion.
What did we do with paid sick leave in that situation? Do you know?
I don't know, sir, but I can get back to you. Mike, I wish my colleague Denise was here.
Judy, I'm agnostic on the question of whether we do it by informal agreement with Bolley or not. I think Bolley has a lot of experience rolling out new rules. And I, my guess is that they generally err on the side of wanting to do a rollout with education and outreach before they have to do enforcement because enforcement is very time-consuming. Enforcement is expensive, and it's very discreet remedies. And what you're doing, you're focusing initially on making sure the largest number of people follow the law.
And in the Bolley, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I was just going to comment on paid sick leave.
Thank you.
That it was a collaborative relationship with Bolley, and we jointly came to and then put on the website that there was going to be a six-month kind of safe harbor of education. And in response to Commissioner Fish's concern about the number, since it says up to 5,000, our experience with Bolley with sick time was that most of the time, a stern letter saying, you're not complying and you need to, has been adequate to bring people into compliance. So they, certainly under Labor Commissioner Abakian, there's a willingness to work with companies and encourage them to do the right thing before bringing down the hammer. So I'm not sure that we have to have it in the, in the contract because that's their mode of operating.
But I think there's a, I think there's a common ground here, which is, I think, I don't feel like anyone disagrees that we ought to make sure that this is, one, collaborative with Bolley, two, informative to the, to every employer, and three, that penalties don't start happening until, you know, there has really been adequate notice and the opportunity for people to get educated. I think all that's possible in our agreement with Bolley, both the formal and informal parts of it. But not having any penalty prescribed in our ordinance makes it a little bit toothless, or might appear to be.
But this is in addition to the remedies they have. They have up to five mayors in addition to the remedies that we have.
Right, right.
And so it is not, it's exist, the existing rule is not toothless. This is an additional, this is an additional remedy.
Fair enough. That is, that is additional. There are other penalties still there.
There are other penalties.
And I, my sense, and again, I, I used to be in the position of urging administrative bodies to, if it's set up to 5,000, I was in the position saying, make it 5,000 plus attorney fees. So there are going to be people that want to push for the limits. I would think something like a 90-day safe harbor, where the understanding is, except in some egregious situation, we would like to get, we would like that stern letter that Commissioner Fritz referred to, saying, you know, here's the law, and you're put on notice. And then take out the additional penalty until we have some data on how we're doing.
But based on our experience with sick time, we're still getting questions in our office about Portland's law, the new law that's been in effect for quite some time now. And one thing that I would want to make sure is in the contract is the education piece. Because we contracted with Bolley to do the outreach to employers, and that actually took a long time to be able to just inform people, this is the rules, this is what you can do with this, what you can't, and to answer questions. So I would suggest that a similar six months of education and outreach would be the appropriate timeframe.
So, we want to take testimony if there is any. But based on this discussion, it might be good to continue this a little longer so that you have a chance to maybe prepare some amendments that reflect this discussion.
Certainly. I just wanted to say one or two things. The Bolley enforcement and complaint procedures do envision exactly what you're talking about, Commissioner. You know, you get a notice. You're asked to correct. There's, it's worked into their administrative process. And it's far down the road before a penalty is given. But I just want to have some clarity from council, I guess without a vote yet, on where you would like to see this fall, a phase-in period around, I'm hearing from, anywhere from 60 days to six months from Commissioner Fritz.
I would propose a 90-day period where, and it doesn't have to, in my, I'm just one voice here, but it doesn't, for me, have to be an explicit safe harbor. I think just an understanding, something reflecting, saying, in the first 90 days, we want the emphasis to be on education, outreach, and remedial action. And then after the 90 days, we expect that, you know, they'll use the civil enforcement mechanism more expansively.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
So that people have at least a chance in the first 90 days, say, oops, I didn't know that. I'll cure it.
And what about the penalty, additional penalty? Are we at, if we're going to try to craft an amendment? Are we thinking, we want to keep that, lower it?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm reluctant. I understand your point, Commissioner Fish. I'm reluctant to have no penalty associated with the city's ordinance. I understand it might not always be $5,000. It certainly shouldn't happen until all this education's happened. But again, should there be some penalty with respect to violation of the city's ordinance? I think so.
This is in addition to existing remedy. If, Mayor, if your intent is to continue this a week,
Yeah.
I would be happy to meet with council and just, so I understand the full range of existing penalties and things. And then I'll have a recommendation.
Yeah, let's do that.
And if I could ask for you to have Commissioner Novick's chief of staff involved in that discussion since he was the one that wanted the increased penalty? That would be helpful.
All right, let's do that.
Thank you.
Just one more item for consideration. While we didn't get a lot of public comments online, we did have some really great, robust conversations with our group as well as with a couple of employment lawyers. One of the things that was mentioned for council consideration, the current matrix does not include attempted crimes, such as attempted murder. I didn't know if there was any appetite at the council level to include attempted offenses on our criminal history matrix, to have them be treated similar to the execution of the crime.
You mean, you mean if somebody is convicted of attempted murder?
Correct, yes.
Well, I think that should be fair game.
Okay.
That should be part of the background.
And one caveat, I guess, is for categories A and B, which are the sort of high crimes and that include many of the crimes against children. For category C, and this is a policy call for the council to make, they are felony drug crimes, which do not include possession but do include manufacture and sale. And my concern is that an attempt of those could be a misdemeanor, and then we'd be sort of down in the possession area. So that is a policy call.
Judy, can you tailor it so that we're talking about the attempted crimes that are very serious and not a way of, as you're suggesting, back-dooring a possession issue? I mean, I think we all understand that attempted murder, which, which means you've done everything but commit the murder, should be treated seriously. We, we're not interested, I think, in, in then having a mere possession of a drug that's now legal be treated as a disqualification.
So what I'm going to suggest is that on the convictions list, that be taken care of with categories A and B. We will include attempts. And then category C, we can leave as is. Is that?
I guess, right.
Great, thank you.
Judy, this is a very complicated subject, and I have to compliment both of you for your presentation and your work.
Thank you, sir.
Well done. Thank you both.
We'll be here if.
All right, we'll see if anyone wants to speak on this item.
Charles Johnson, sign up.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. Sometimes you're over diligent. I do believe that the hard work that these women and their coworkers have done was adequate, sometimes more than adequate compared to other things that have passed this council. But, you know, I think we should all be glad that I'm the only person here talking. There's nobody here from the Portland Business Alliance. No business lobby is overly concerned that this is going to destroy the Portland economy because it's not. It's going to make the Portland economy better. People are having a harder time and have been unable to find work are going to have a greater chance of getting involved in the local economy. And we often berate you sometimes for the emergency ordinances, which is, of course, just a matter of semantics, the way things work here. But I would even encourage you that after you get the results you're looking for from the city's attorney's office, that this come back as an emergency. Because I really think that if you had passed it today, that would actually help give certainty and clarity to the business community rather than having it go for an extra week of refinement. But whether you reconsider and actually just pass it today or stretch it for a week, it's a good package. The 27 pages of PDF are out there. Nobody's biting at that bait and coming in and complaining. So I look forward to you either passing it this week or as an emergency next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Further record, Mr. Johnson, the Portland Business Alliance did send a lot of concern.
So I'm not sure if a week is enough, but do you think so?
I think a week's enough.
Okay, then let's do it.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll definitely come into your offices and we'll get this back for next Wednesday.
All right, so I won't be here on next week. So that's another reason.
When is the effective date of this? When is the whole thing?
You won't be here the week.
It's July 1st.
The mayor.
Next week I'll be here. Sorry, never mind. Wrong week.
You're here next week?
Yes, it's wrong week.
Yeah, and the effective date of this isn't until July 1st anyway, so.
Yes, okay.
I think next week is reasonable.
Okay, and we do plan on, which is why we wanted to get it before council now, throughout the month of June, having some educational forums.
Sure, and next week's June.
So we wanted a little bit of a.
Yes. So then it goes into effect 30 days after we vote next week?
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. I will, I will continue this for a week. Just want to say, in, just in reflecting on this work, you know, there are, there's some things that Portland has really been leaning on in terms of progressive public policy. One of them is sick leave. This is another. And as it happens, I was at the White House yesterday at a meeting convened by.
We're waving an end drop.
Yeah, right. I was at the White House yesterday.
Just happened to be at the White House.
And Vice President Biden convened a meeting to talk about, what do we do about gun violence in this country? And there were mayors and governors there. And, and there are things you can do in public policy, And there are things you can do in public policy like what the Oregon Legislature did last session, and that's good. And what you always find out in these discussions is that some states are ahead of us and some states are behind us. So, for example, Commissioner Saltzman, the thing you advocated for the hardest, the divestment violence restraining order policy, that was lauded along with the closing the background check loophole, that was lauded. But we still are pikers compared to Connecticut where they banned assault weapons and large magazines at the state level. So, you know, you get to compare notes. Secondly, there's good work being done in terms of community policing around the country, building relationships. But the strongest thing that we heard in that discussion, again, in terms of what other people are doing, because every city is dealing with an increase in gang violence, we have a particularly egregious increase in gang violence in our city. We had 15 people killed and 73 wounded last year in incidents of gang violence. This year, we're already at 58 incidents, one person killed, over 500 shots fired. So unfortunately, we're exceeding the pace of last year's gang activity. That kind of increase is happening around the country. But from mayor after mayor, from Mayor Freeman Wilson in Gary, from Mayor Hodges in Minneapolis, from Mayor Walsh in Boston, from Mayor Barrett in Milwaukee, there was this really strong theme that in all their gang outreach work, in all their effort to try to get around the front of this problem, instead of just having police work deal with gang incidents after the fact, everybody was on the same message, which is when you really talk to gang-affected young men and you ask them the question, what is the one thing that the community could do that would get you off this path? I said, without exception, every single conversation that they'd had in every single city was a job. If I had a good job, I would change my life, period. It was that clear. And so when there's a huge percentage of our young people who have a criminal record because they've been involved in gangs once before, and every single community that's ever actually had a conversation with a gang member says, the thing you can do that will make a difference is make sure they can get a job, then that's why this is such an important piece of work. And those conversations, I was really struck by that, that, you know, hospital visits to try to get people to talk about who shot them are a good idea. Maybe it's not necessarily a police officer in those conversations, might be a social worker, might be somebody like the gang outreach workers that we just authorized additional positions for. Those things work, but the thing that you can do that will make the most difference is help them get a job. Pretty simple. So that's why this is important work. And I appreciate Judy, you're passionate about this, you've put a lot of work into it, Rachel, same to you. I appreciate the good work that you've done to queue this up as public policy. And I think this discussion at the council is very telling, which is if our employers get it, that this works and it makes a big difference in the community. I think that they'll be enthusiastic partners in getting this worked on. So we will continue this for a week so that those discussions and council offices can happen and possible amendments will come back with the draft next week. Okay, that's done. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to, sorry, looking to see if we have a time.
I just note that we may need to do it as an emergency next week.
Yeah, we might.
Because if there are amendments, then it would go over to another week.
Yeah, so it will be, okay, so let's do. Yeah, I was gonna say, we might want to go ahead and do, I don't see everyone for the next item, let's go ahead and do the items that we pulled, so let's do 541.
Authorize an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County in the amount of $60,000 for overtime costs to ensure investigators and reconstructionists are available to respond to after-hours and weekend call-outs for fatal and prosecutable crash scenes and high-profile crashes involving city employees within the city.
Okay, Sergeant Abrams, I'm welcome. Thank you, good morning. This IGA really is to provide the city with an objective, non-biased investigation when a city employee or an officer is involved in a high-profile crash. We're using best practice when we have officer-involved shootings. This is along that same vein. That way, if things do go to litigative issues down the line, we can actually say that things were done objectively. Clackamas County currently has six investigators, which is a vast amount. They've been awarded national recognition and national awards for their team. They'll be responding within 45 minutes. So when we have to cover special events, historically, we've tapped on other agencies to cover for us for our fatal and significant crashes to investigate, but there's been no compensation. So this wouldn't enable us, number one, as far as best practice, to compensate them for their time. And at the same time, as far as caseloads and fatals increasing, and we're lacking officers on the road, and as I continue to see them increasing in years to come, unfortunately, this would allow us to also use them as a resource if we're inundated and overwhelmed with a serious amount of crashes like we were the first three months of this year.
So this is, any police officer, any firefighter, any city worker on a maintenance crew gets involved in a crash?
Sure, yeah, and as a crash team sergeant, we would still have a reconstructionist out at the scene also, just for an outside view. But frankly, the overall investigation needs to take place outside Portland.
Yeah, okay. Questions for Sergeant Abramsen? Thank you very much. We'll see.
I mean, this includes city employees on or off duty, I assume?
It would be contingent on the case, it would be contingent on a case-by-case basis. But if there could be a liability incurred for the city, then yes. If somebody is off work in the city vehicle, again, it'd be contingent on the specifics.
Thank you, thanks very much. Anyone want to speak on this item?
Mr. Walsh pulled this.
Come on up.
For the record, my name is Joe Walsh. I represent Individuals for Justice. We would like to know if these investigations would include the chief of police shooting his friend in the back and a mayor covering it out for a month? Does anybody know because they are city employees? And $60,000, I don't know if it would cover that. Talks about crashes, but also talks about city employees. So can anybody tell me?
This only affects automobiles.
Pardon?
This only affects the use of automobiles.
Automobiles. So if the chief of police ran over somebody, it would be covered by this?
If any city employee got involved in a crash, it could be covered by this, yes.
Okay, and if the mayor covered it out for a month, would he be investigated under this? What investigation would that take place?
We'll have that conversation some other time, but this is about.
I'm sure you don't want to talk about this, mayor. I mean, why did you cover it out for a month?
Joe, we're not on that subject here.
Well, we are on the subject because it's in there. These are city employees, and you covered the shooting over a month where the chief of police lied. That's a felony. If I lie to an investigator, that is a felony. If you conspire, that's obstruction of justice. So tell me, mayor, how did you do that?
Are you done?
Are you immune to this?
Mr. Walsh, you can testify, but I'm not going to be cross-examined. Are you finished?
You should be cross, you should be arrested. That's what you should be. There is a police officer here. He should arrest you. And by the way, from now on, until this investigation is over, would you please tell the police department to leave their guns outside so they don't shoot me in the back? If they shoot their friends in the back, what did they do to activists?
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
You should resign, sir. If you had anything you need, you'd walk out of here. How in God's name can you sit there and say, well, we're not going to discuss that, Mr. Walsh? You sound like Trump.
Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. I think that this illustrates a problem that we often talk about regarding equity in the city. It's great that the city is an established organization that can allocate 60,000 overtimes to make sure that when they have, when we have a vehicular accident, we get the ultimate greatest protection from liability by, or not necessarily, I mean, a quality investigation would prove if we're liable, so I don't know that, you know, that's, you know, there's a question of the legitimacy and unbiased nature of police work. That's one of the reasons there's a case of the United States of America versus the city of Portland. But my main concern here is, I think, what underlies and provokes some of Mr. Walsh's anger is that we know that people, based on their economic situation, are afraid of getting fair treatment from the police. We know that low-income drivers with second-rate insurance are at risk because here's the city, we can say, oh, we got to protect the taxpayers' dollars, which we don't always do so well, we'll be talking about Washington Park reservoirs in a little bit. But I just want you to, in addition to some of the more personal and ethical issues raised by the prior testimony, also always remember that you all, with your $100,000 salaries and roles as kind of co-CEOs on a billion-dollar city budget, can do these things, and they are perhaps prudent. But let it also energize your work to look out for the small person, the little guy who can't afford a car, the person who's got borderline insurance and is scared that when the police show up, that if they're a person of color, they're automatically at fault. Let's continue to work to have unbiased, excellent policing that doesn't involve special allotments for overtime. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, this is an emergency ordinance, ready to take action. Let's take a vote, please.
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi. Okay, item 544.
Authorize a new 10-year lease with urban office and parking facilities for the Bureau of Human Resources City Kids Child Care Operation Relocation.
Good morning, I understand you have some amendments for us, Anna?
Yeah, we do have the amendments. Hang on a second.
Okay, we've got them in front of us, so I mean, why don't I move those and then you can explain them as you go?
Sure.
So I'll move the amendments.
Second.
Okay, we'll take a roll call to accept those.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
These were distributed ahead of time, and no Director Kenwood will then explain them. Aye.
Aye, okay, so explain, please, both the ordinance and the amendments.
All right, thank you, Mayor Commissioners, Anna Kenwood, Director of the Bureau of Human Resources. I'm just going to say a couple of things about the ordinance, and then I'll turn it over to Tom Schneider, who is my manager, who's been responsible for all of the work in managing our current contract with a daycare provider and the work that's gone into the ordinance before you today. The ordinance really, and the financial impact statement, I think, lay out very well what we're doing, but in essence, this is part of a look forward in preparation for moving out of the Portland Building while that building is being reconstructed. And I think pretty much regardless of the ultimate decision about moving employees, we will not be having children in the building. What came up is a vacant center, the Crown Plaza area, for a childcare center that was there that moved out. Tom Schneider's been in negotiations with Melvin Mark for quite some time over that center, and by acquiring that leased space, it really saves about half of the cost if we were to start from scratch on a childcare center. The advantage of the, several advantages of this, one is to continue to provide a benefit to our employees that is really incredibly important. Commissioner Fritz and I had the pleasure of listening to one of our deep affinity groups, City Mamas, and uniformly talked about this as a wonderful benefit, even those who actually didn't have children but who were attending that meeting anyway. There was also a suggestion about would be great to have a center that was closer to our employees than 1900 building, and of course, the location of this center does just that. One of the, although this is not part of the ordinance, I'm also strongly recommending that when all is said and done, not only do we retain this new center, that's the subject of this ordinance today, but we then continue to have a childcare center, a child development center in the Portland Building as well. The demand is there, we know the demand is there, our workforce demographics are changing, so that we'll continue to be there. I know 30 years ago, I had trouble finding quality daycare for my sons, so again, this is just really a very positive benefit for employees and definitely contributes to the city being an employer of choice as we market ourselves. So I'm going to turn over to Tom Schneider, who can talk about the amendment and the leasing.
Okay.
So good morning, my name's Tom Schneider. I'm with the Bureau of Human Resources, I'm the contract manager for City Kids. We've had a relationship with Joyful Noise, very successful, providing city child development services for city employees for roughly 15 years. And the amendment, in essence, we're looking at, is changing, I mean, the actual lease or allowing lease to be a 10-year lease. For the 10-year lease agreement, Melvin Mark has conceded additional resources for tenant improvement as well as improvement of the core building infrastructure that are items typically improved by newly, new tenants. In essence, this particular amendment also is approving an additional $200,000 be provided in order to be allocated toward the direct construction cost to improve the space required to operate a daycare. And the amendment that we have in front of us basically allows for $200,000 to be provided from OMS.
Excuse me.
And the 60,000 of that is to be utilized in next year's inter-agency rates to cover the general fund cost related to general fund bureaus. The additional $140,000 is intended to be absorbed by those bureaus who are non-general fund. And this specific amendment was something we agreed to with the Central Budget Office at their request. So I guess that that pretty much, Anna's done a really good job summarizing why we have this benefit for city employees. We've put a lot of effort, not only in locating the space, but also negotiating with Melvin Mark. Facilities has done a great job of supporting us in that effort. We still have a lot of work to do. This is basically an emergency ordinance, or has an ordinance that has emergency clause, primarily because we are, Melvin Mark is asking us to occupy the space beginning on September 1, and in order to complete the construction, we need three full months in order to complete the design, the bidding, as well as the actual construction of the space.
Okay, thank you both. Questions about this?
I just want to say, I'm delighted to hear you say that we intend to keep this space in addition to our space in the Portland Building, so that's great.
That's great, yeah, much needed. Okay, thank you both very much. Anyone want to speak on this item? If not, then it is an emergency ordinance, let's take a vote, please.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
I'm very happy that when the childcare center was at risk during the recession, that we were able to stay and continue it and indeed expanding it and looking to stay in this location beyond the 10 years is a great investment for our employees and something that all employers should be looking at. Thank you. Aye.
Appreciate your good work on this, thank you very much. Aye. Okay, one more item that we pulled, and then we'll go to actually 560 because I see Councilor Harrington's here. So let's take 546, please.
Authorize a contract with Moore Excavation Inc. for construction of the northeast 112th and Holman Emergency Repair Project Number E10841 for $750,000.
Okay, Commissioner Fish?
Thank you, mayor. My office pulled this because it's above the $500,000 threshold that we established for putting things on the regular agenda. Environmental Services needs to replace a 100-foot section of a 42-inch diameter sewer pipe, which is currently in very poor condition. A four-foot section of the pipe collapsed in April, causing a large cavity in northeast Holman Street and northeast 112th Avenue. This sewer serves Portland International Airport, Cascade Station, and several hotels. We've made a temporary repair to the collapsed pipe, but because of the large service area and the risk to traffic, we need to make permanent repairs as soon as possible. And Joe Dvorak is here to give us a very brief presentation, answer your questions. Joe?
Good morning. I'll just push the button on the base of that there, Joe. Thanks, there you go.
Good morning, Mayor Hales and Commissioners. Like Commissioner Fish said, I'm Joe Dvorak, I'm an engineer with BES, and I'll give you some visual aids regarding this project. So here's the location of where the sinkhole appeared last month, northeast 112th and Holman. The white border around there is basically the extent of the sinkhole, and the hole there at the top is what manifests at the top. Soon as we found it, we declared an emergency and made a temporary repair. So we're here today to get authorization to move forward on the permanent repair. This is the service area that Commissioner Fish mentioned, as you can see, the project location, and the pink area there is the area that served Portland International Airport, Cascade Station, and area hotels. In addition, the actual location of the repair is in a high-traffic volume for truck routes. So we need to move as quickly as possible to repair the remainder of the line. Here's a shot of the pipe that we made a temporary fix on. We plan to move quickly, safely, and minimize impact to local traffic and businesses. We estimate the value of the contract to be $750,000, and because of the emergency nature of the work, that's moderate confidence level. We expect it to take about three weeks to complete, so by the end of next month.
Okay, thank you very much.
Did this class a bid?
It did not. Because of the very urgent nature of it, we directly hired Moore Excavation.
And why did we choose Moore Excavation?
Because of the complex nature of the excavation, the 24-inch force main and availability. So we looked at several different contractors and who was available to start right away.
And what's the minority and women-owned business participation in subcontract? I didn't see that in the documentation.
So Moore will be subcontracting traffic control and flagging to Coat and pavement cutting to Brothers Saw Cutting.
I know in the past that they haven't had a very good percentage, and so that's, I'm somewhat concerned about the direct allocation. I understand the emergency nature of it, and they get a lot of our contracts anyway. I hope that you will continue to work with them, as I know procurement is, to expand the diversity in their workforce as well as in their subcontract opportunities.
We will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, just to be clear, when we have an emergency situation like this, it requires Commissioner in charge sign off to, because of the emergency, so that's the protocol, then we come back for the follow-up item. And we share Commissioner Fritz's commitment to boosting our MW ESP numbers. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone want to speak on this item? Okay, come on up.
Yes, my name is Lightning, I represent Lightning and Watchdog Communications, PDX. I'll be brief on this. Even though it's an emergency, I think there should be several bids brought to the table, whether three at a minimum. I think that we need to stand by the procedures of allowing competitive bidding to get the best price. This is the taxpayers ultimately, utility, paying for this, and I think they deserve that right. So again, I do not like to have the Commissioner in charge sign off on a one-person company due to emergency. I prefer to have competitive bidding in place any and all times, and I'm sure contractors can step up in a reasonable manner and provide their information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lightning, I appreciate your testimony, and I share the values proposition you make, I agree. When we have a main of this size and magnitude that disables an entire part of the city, we don't have the luxury of going out to bidding, but perhaps we can look at the process we use to identify contractors that are in the queue to do this work on an emergency basis. But this is the equivalent of calling out an ambulance, and we just don't have the time to do a bidding process on that ambulance, we've got to get the first repair done.
Yeah, I mean, there is an engineering work and maybe in construction as well, an on-call list sometimes of pre-qualified contractors, and that's a good suggestion.
We'll take a look at that to make sure that there's been an adequate screening at the front end.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks very much, Joe. Anyone else? If not, that is an emergency ordinance, let's take a vote, please.
Thanks, Joe, for your presentation and your work. Aye.
Saltzman?
Thank you. Aye.
Fritz?
Thank you for pulling it to the regular agenda. Commissioner Fish? Aye.
Hales?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, one more pulled item, and then we'll go to 560 because I see Metro Council Harrington's here. Let's do 549.
Authorize memorandum of agreement with Multnomah County Drainage District for the 408 permit process to construct the Marine Drive path around the Columbia River levee.
Mr. Novick's not here, but I think this was pulled for someone who wanted to speak?
Mr. Lightning pulled it.
Okay, come on up. All right, good. An explanation, and then someone who wants to speak. Good.
Sorry. Winston Sandino, I'm the project manager for the project, and this item is really simple. We're just going to have MCD, which is the Multnomah County Drainage District, review the permit, which is a 408 permit that they need to review for a signal that we're going to install on 122nd. At this point, they don't have a permit system, kind of like BDS, you know, you go and get a, want to build a house, you get a permit and pay a fee. They don't. They don't have a system like that. So to be able to...for them to review and charge time, we need to have an agreement between the P bot and Multnomah County. So that's basically what it is.
Okay. Makes sense. Thank you. Questions? Thanks very much. Okay. Lightning, did you want to speak on this item? Come on up.
Yes, my name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Watchdog Communications P D X. As you know, the levee is a very important decision on any permits being pulled at this time. Still waiting on the overall certification and recertification of the levee. And I always question anything being pulled at this time along the levee because as we just had some great speakers in here on Vanport, we need to learn from history and understand our levee is outdated. They may do patchwork on it here or there, but it is not up to the New Orleans Katrina standards, which these speakers were talking about. And a breach on the levee is just having two travel lanes going on top of it, which is Marine Drive. That is considered a breach of a levee. And we need to understand, we need to focus on this levee, we need to understand projecting out, we need to rebuild the levee. First of all, phase one, to protect the airport, any and all costs, all businesses, population surrounding the airport. And we need to start focusing on rebuilding the levee and learn from what happened at Vanport, but understand our population base and our businesses and the dollar amounts will suggest, if you do the study, that we can obtain federal financing to begin to rebuild the levee. The valuations will prove that, they'll give a certain percentage, and now is the time to really do it and understand it needs to be done now. We're in the middle of climate change issues that are very unpredictable and we cannot take a chance with the Portland International Airport and the overall economy and the people living around at this time. We need to focus on rebuilding that levee and making sure the people are protected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Then let's take a vote, please, on 549.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye. Okay. Let's move to our regular agenda and again, because we have another elected official here, let's take item 560 first.
Authorize an intergovernmental agreement with Metro and associated easement documents for the One North Nature in Neighborhoods Project.
Good morning. Good morning, Councilor Harrington. And we have a presentation and some invited testimony this morning on this item, so thank you all for being here. Who wants to kick it off?
I'll kick it off. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Dave McElhany. I'm the Right-of-Way Acquisition Supervisor for P bot. And the ordinance before you today is a result of a partnership between P bot, Metro, and Catlin Gable School and the developers of the One North Project, which is a mixed-use development on North Fremont Street between North Williams and North Vancouver. Catlin Gable School, in coordination with the developer, applied for and received a Nature in the Neighborhoods grant from Metro to create a 14,000-square-foot public courtyard at One North. Metro's grant requires the developer to convey a public access easement. For the courtyard and a government sponsor must be the ultimate holder of the easement. Since there is already a public alley going through the center of the courtyard, P bot has agreed to act as the government sponsor for this easement. Under the terms of an I G A with Metro, P bot will acquire the easement from Catlin Gable through an assignment of the courtyard easement. Under the terms of the I G A, the easement...and the easement, P bot expects that the property owners will perform essentially all maintenance in the easement area and will be responsible for abating any nuisances in the easement area. Accordingly, P bot's future expenses would be minimal, if any. At this point, I'll turn it over to Councilor Harrington.
Thank you. Good morning, Catherine Harrington, Metro Councilor. I had the honor of serving on the Nature in Neighborhoods Review...Capital Grants Review Committee that reviewed this application and advanced it along with a slate of applications to the Metro Council for full funding approval. At Metro, we've learned that creative placemaking is much more than building a new plaza or park. Placemaking is about engaging people, the people that live and have a history in the neighborhood. Today, you're going to hear a story of placemaking on North Williams. It involves unlikely players, such as two developers and a private school. These partners have brought an authentic desire to make the courtyard at One North a true community space. They have a story to tell and I hope you're as excited as I am to hear it today. We appreciate Catlin Gable's innovative vision for placemaking and their ability to build relationships with many community organizations to co-govern the activities that will happen in the courtyard. I want to thank the Portland Bureau of Transportation for accepting the public easement. This easement will provide the foundation of public ownership that this space deserves. Without this easement, the courtyard would just be another commercial space for building tenants. But with this easement, P bot is participating in something far more innovative than meets the eye. By ensuring the continued use and maintenance of this space for neighborhood residents in perpetuity, the easement gives the community the authority to call this space theirs. What that will look like is beginning to take shape. I look forward to seeing how this space enriches people's experience of nature and strengthens a physical connection to the region's ecology by including native plants in the planters that reference the region's natural history, by incorporating ecological design solutions through the use of porous pavement and native plants, and by providing access to nature for people with disabilities. Metro's Nature in Neighborhoods Capital Grants implement long-term capital investment projects throughout the developed area of our region. These grants encourage groups and jurisdictions to seek creative solutions to challenges. Since 2006, those voter-supported funds have inspired community groups to partner for new projects across the Portland metropolitan region. We look forward to seeing how other leaders, businesses, and community members across the metropolitan region and possibly across the country use this project as a model for employing new ways of working together to preserve our natural resources and improve the lives of residents simultaneously.
Great. Thank you. Welcome. Good morning. I'd like to go first. Ben, there's a button on the base of the microphone there. There you go.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors, for making the time today to hear us. Appreciate the city process. Owen, next to me, Owen Gabbert, and I would like to also thank the many folks...
Just put your name on the record, please.
Ben Kaiser, here in the city of Portland. Owen Gabbert and I would like to thank the many folks that were involved in making our One North Project the most innovative, sustainable, and replicable project in the city. In a couple of weeks, in fact, we will be recognized for winning the Portland Business Journal's Sustainable Project of the Year. This award is quite an honor since we are in a city that leads the country in an upward spiral to use less energy, increase awareness of limited resources, and improve the overall public realm. We'd also like to thank the Life Change Church, which is our neighbor to the north, particularly Mark Strong, the pastor, and Jorrell Waddell, Eric Lemelson, another team member who's not here, Nels Owen's father, R and H Construction, Holst Architecture, Catlin Gable with George Zaninovich, Metro, particularly Mary Rose Navarro, who's in the audience today, as well as Councilor Harrington here, both critical members in this journey, Path Architecture, Kaiser Group. With this very group is the open and supportive collaboration that allowed this award-winning outcome. Prior to any pencils being lifted, the entire team assembled and began with a full-day eco charade. It was there that the team realized that by joining forces, we were able to achieve much more than by going it alone. The original decisions of timber framing for the entire project and a shared courtyard set off us all off on a path that has set a new citywide precedent for not only building typologies but also shared resources. The old approach to eco-districts has been supplanted by different ways to integrate a building surroundings. Beyond just energy sharing, an eco-district can represent parking agreements between contiguous properties, business relationships, local community support systems, income stream enhancements, et cetera. With the widely accepted carbon sequestration attributes of building in timber, coupled with these innovative approaches to integrating local communities, One North heralds in a new eco-district, in our opinion. The Nature Neighborhoods program at Metro, coupled with the $420,000 grant, is what was needed to allow this development team to dedicate the 15,000-square-foot courtyard as a public space. This public plaza costs approximately $1.2 million to build and will be maintained by us, the property owners, in perpetuity. This means that the city of Portland was given a public plaza that is maintained by others for a total cost of less than 1.5 years of just the maintenance costs at Director's Park. As you're aware, P bot was the recipient of the easement in order to make this grant process work. We approached the logical recipient, the Parks Bureau, at first, but were quickly dismissed for reasons we couldn't quite decipher. So I think going forward, something we could all learn from this, and I think this is replicable, I think the Parks Bureau will be the logical recipient. P bot graciously stepped forward, but it wasn't without some difficulties on all of our parts because it didn't quite fit. But going forward would be great if the Parks Bureau picked this up. And as we spoke about the replicability of this entire process, it was very important to us. So that's why we suggest Parks Bureau going forward. And following up on just the eco-district, if I can just take a minute to go off-topic a bit, we're presently, in my opinion, in a leadership vacuum in a lot of different bureaus in Portland. When we are working our hardest to make something great for the city, we are constantly met with obstacles and bureaucratic hurdles. The days of strong leadership that is able to make something happen seem to be gone in Portland. Whether due to the belief that everyone needs to weigh in on everything in our city or whether we are all now afraid to make a decision for fear of reprisal, the process is essentially ground to a halt. We are all aware of the incredible line at the Building Permit Department. We're all aware of the record-breaking backlog at Design Review. We're aware of the dysfunction at P bot and P P S, as well as a number of other departments. In my opinion, what's lacking is leadership. The biggest fear that I have regarding this particular aspect is the present comprehensive plan work that is underway at risk, as we speak, of the long-held density goals that Portland is known for. Due to everyone's voice being heard and every vegetable garden being important, every view being sacrosanct, and every parking space guaranteed, we are now collectively agreeing to back up 40 years of urban planning. As you know, F A R reductions citywide are on the table and it seems like that's going to actually happen. This is because during public testimony, everybody in the city stood before this council to complain about how they personally would be affected, how their personal gardens would lose sunlight, how their parking space in the public street would be lost, how their views would be compromised. What has been missing, in my opinion, has been the conversation of what is being lost by us all as a city when F A R is reduced. What has been missing is a strong leader in these conversations that is willing to take the heat, as past leaders have, for making decisions that are good for neighborhoods and not neighbors. Leaders willing to tell people that, yes, their private parking and public right-of-ways will likely disappear. Leaders willing to tell people that to live adjacent to what was long ago dedicated as a high-density and tall commercial corridor is in fact going to happen. Leaders willing to say what is good for our city 25 years from now as opposed to what is good for the neighbors today. We absolutely cannot, in my opinion, lower the F A R allowances in the city. There is no reason, and with global warming fully upon us, it is absolutely irresponsible. A healthy city heart and corridors with high density is without a doubt the most important thing that we can give to future generations. Downgrading these densities result one-for-one with urban sprawl. Urban sprawl further compromises public infrastructure, public transportation, and further consumes natural resources. And as you guys know, for the first time ever, a cruise ship is going through the Northwest Passage this summer. And that's just evidence that I think that this global warming is truly right. It's happening as we speak. So I think we, as a city, as a way to continue to lead, should do everything we can to perpetuate the work of the last 50 years. But regardless of that ranting for a minute, we really are appreciative of everything that we've accomplished together on this process.
Ben, you might want to, while you're here, actually stop in my office and talk to Camille Trummer because I'm not sure where you got the impression that we're lowering F A Rs in the comp plan. So it's a longer conversation.
Sure. We'll get into that.
We just voted on that last week. We're going to vote on it again next week. It's actually going in the other direction. So...
Well, we'll get into it.
Yeah. You might want to catch up on where the comp plan is because...
All right.
And the mixed-use zoning project as well because if...it's certainly not my intention and I don't believe it's the rest of this council's intention to back up on our density objectives at our climate action plan.
It's the bonuses to get you back up above...
Recommendations that haven't yet been approved by the city council are just that.
Moving back to the subject at hand.
Sure, sure, sure.
I'm glad you raised the issue of parks being unwilling to take on the easement here. And so part of our concern is, as you know, there are many reasons, but part of the concern is that we don't have the capacity to take on management of a new park in this area. So my concern is, will there be signage that will say who to call if there are issues and also to invite people in so that they do know that it's a public space and not a private space?
There's quite a bit of signage already in place, yeah, saying it's very public.
So and what about security and who would cover because the parks rangers will not be?
We're taking care of security and maintenance.
So there'll be on the sign it'll say if there's a concern that they should call a private security number?
It's the property manager's number.
And they're available?
Yeah.
Well done. Great. Thank you.
Gabbert, anything you want to add?
No, I just wanted to be present. Owen Gabbert, one of the developers, and to help answer any of those questions, since I spent a fair amount of time going through the process. And I, you know, I think it's an interesting question, Commissioner Fritz, because we didn't...we weren't looking for maintenance or security or anything. We were looking for a partner to take an easement and that was the primary role we needed. So I think, you know, it was probably incumbent on us to help articulate that, but it would have been great to get to a place where we could have had that conversation, maybe at a level for someone who could make that approval. So I can appreciate the reluctance, but I think a lot of those issues are alleviated by the structure of how we've done our development and how the grant is structured.
We have a bit of a different opinion on that, but tell me, how was Catlin Gable involved because their school is not located near here, right?
Sure. Why don't I...yeah, why don't I give...
There's someone here.
Another panel? Okay. Hold my question.
May I just state an objection? We're out of sequence or just spent 10 minutes on a rant that has nothing to do with this issue. And we've got about 20 people here who have signed up peacefully ahead of time to deal with another matter. And frankly, if this is going to continue much farther, I'm going to move that we continue.
All right. Now, we have one more person, Catlin Gable, and I think we should take action on this.
But I'm inclined to continue it and not vote for it if this continues much longer because I think it's disrespectful to the people that are actually ahead of the queue.
Thanks, Commissioner Fish. Let me...I'd like, if you don't mind, if I can introduce Catlin in place and give you a quick overview of what they do and help answer that question and then let them talk because I think that's going to be the most compelling part of our presentation. So to answer your question briefly, Catlin has a program called PLACE, which is an urban studies program. And that program is open to students from around the city. And so they became involved after we approached numerous neighborhood organizations and nonprofits about partnering. One thing that's great about nonprofits is they're very mission-driven and we had a hard time finding a group that's mission-fit, what we were trying to do around this public plaza with nature and neighborhoods. So Catlin's urban studies program through PLACE was a good fit and also had already engaged in this neighborhood. So that is how we ended up with Catlin Gable as our partner and more specifically PLACE. And you're going to hear a little bit more about that from Tim Bazemore and Tyler.
They should come on up then. Let's complete this.
Thank you.
It's like there's...you're going to come up as well. Why don't you guys yield and let...
Sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, and good morning, Commissioners. I'm Tim Bazemore, the head of Catlin Gable School, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here with my friends, Deena and Tyler, this morning to share with you what I think is truly compelling about the opportunity to work with community partners in northeast Portland here. We are grateful to P bot and to Metro and to One North Development Team for providing the opportunity to have access to this public space and also some adjacent office space. And we early in this conversation decided that rather than have this be a Catlin Gable outpost in northeast Portland, in fact, it ought to be a community-driven use in this outpost in northeast Portland, in fact, it ought to be a community-driven use in this particular space here. So George Zinovich, whom you know from our PLACE program, spent nine months last year meeting with religious, civic, educational, and business leaders in the community, in the neighborhood, listening carefully, asking questions, learning, and acknowledging perceptions of a school like Catlin Gabel School in certain parts of Portland itself. And what we heard is that we need to respect the history of the community, we need to respect the good efforts and impressive efforts already happening in terms of community development there, and that there was an opportunity here to partner with friends and neighbors to create a hub for youth leadership training and empowerment on a collective basis. So rather than creating a Catlin Gabel School program, we've created a community coalition together as partners here, with vision and a mission in this space called the Center, which is an acronym for Create, Engage, Notice, Empower, and Remember. So while Catlin Gabel itself is the recipient of the grant in this particular case, we actually only occupy one seat at the table with five community partners, I Urban Teen, Kairos PDX Charter School, the Black United Fund, Urban League, and De La Salle North. We've created a low-commitment, high-impact co-governance model here that's really intended to benefit young people, young adults and youth and teens from all over the city of Portland. We think this is the way we all should be working together in this city of ours that we share as citizens and community friends. And I'm going to stop there and hand it off to Dina Perro from I Urban Teen and Tyler White from De La Salle North, who can share with you what's actually happening there, which is the most exciting part of the.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, it's so nice to be here this morning, and I'm very honored to actually talk about this collaborative that we have. I strongly believe in collective impact, and sometimes it's hard to make that happen in places where you're working with other nonprofits, but we're able to do that. Is it perfect right now? No, it's not, but we're heading in that direction. I Urban Teen, as you know, is a STEM+ arts program with an intentional reach to youth of color. We're in four states and growing to a national model, however, we don't have space, you know, which was really difficult for me. So when this opportunity came to me last year, when George shared what he was trying to do, it was perfect for us, because now our youth have a location where we can do our coding camps, our teen council meetings, our parent meetings, you know, all of our GIS mapping trainings can be right there. We have a designated space where I'm not going out begging for space from different industries or schools. So I am quite honored to have this. And the other nice part about it is, we're still kind of going through our collective impact work with the other organizations, but just having them as my resource to help share our information with their networks and I theirs is priceless. I really commend them for creating this space.
Hi, Tyler White, and I am a sophomore at De La Salle North Catholic High School, and I have the honor of running the I Love This Place blog, which is dedicated to telling the stories and narratives of gentrification, displacement, and community change through the people who experience them. And we've interviewed everyone from poets to youth poets to even the mayor himself. So it's been a very amazing experience, and I've got to travel all over the city and really get to examine and see the differences between people in response to where they live and the things that they have gone through, but then also see the similarities in that too. And also, at the Center, I am the youth coordinator, and I also have the honor of working with a group of students from Kairos PDX, where we do a mutual mentorship program. And we decided to try to get together and try to figure out some service project, and they identified the biggest problem in their community being love, which is actually a very interesting issue that five-to-eight-year-olds identify themselves. And what we've done is we decided to do some type of an art project where we cut out little hearts and we put it on rocks, and we're going to write a very nice letter to all the different community participants in the area, so whether that be businesses or homeowners themselves. And just this experience has been amazing, and I just, and actually, last night, we just had a discussion with myself, a student from Catlin Gabel, and a student from Oregon Islamic Academy, and it was a discussion that we organized, planned, and facilitated about the inward, and we had over five schools there and almost 50 people. And we had the ability to utilize the courtyard with doing some kind of an interactive piece where we asked people questions in regards to the inward and had them step to the line if they could understand it. So the space and the opportunity that I have garnered from being a part of this coalition and just having the opportunity to know a lot of these people has been amazing, and it's extending out to more high schoolers and more youth in general, where it's not just focused on the different kids who come from these coalitions and the coalition members and the organizations that they are a part of. So truly, truly, thank you guys.
Great, thanks for your leadership.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you for taking the time to come today, that was very compelling.
Yeah, excellent work. All right, anyone else want to speak on this item?
I would.
Okay, come on up.
I'll take it fast. I tend to agree with Commissioner Fish. In the future, there'll be cuts to state education funding, one way or the other, and these programs will try to seek Portland money. I'm more afraid of things like pollution, transportation issues, whether we have increasing budgets for schools, because they will be cut.
Thank you.
Could you put your name in the record, please?
He did.
He did, all right? I missed your name, sorry.
Oh, Mr. Shedrick.
Yes, Shedrick. Okay, anyone else? Then let's take a vote, please.
I'm sorry, our colleague, Commissioner Novick's not here to take a bow and to offer his praise for this unique partnership. He's on, I think, a well-deserved vacation after the election. I want to thank everyone that's taken the time to come testify, and particularly the young man from De La Salle. I don't remember being that poised and that self-confident as a sophomore in high school. Congratulations and for your involvement. And if you could let us know, is your blog accessible? Can we all find it? Okay, well, I'm sure we'll all be looking at it later. And this seems like a wonderful idea, and I regret that as part of the presentation to council, we got sidetracked with stuff about the comp plan and leadership and the bureaus and other things. Those are good subjects for a conversation, I think they're a bit of a non sequitur, maybe a little unfair to the people that were called out, since we're not going to have an opportunity to respond. And I think in the future, with invited testimony, we're going to have to be clear about guidelines. Anyway, congratulations to everyone who made this a day possible. Bye.
Well, I want to commend everybody who's had something to do with One North. It's a very exciting, cutting-edge, environmentally cautious project, and it's just amazing. I've met with Mr. Kaiser before about it and learned about, I think you're using cross-laminated timber, which is one of the new building materials that not only sequesters carbon, as was mentioned, but is a domestic organ resource, and it's great to be able to support Oregonians working. And I think that the partnership with Catlin Gabel and De La Salle and Kairos PDX and everybody else is just fantastic, so congratulations. Bye.
Yes, thank you to all the partners on this and for thinking and listening about it. Thanks to Metro for providing the Nature in the Neighborhood grants, and Mayor Rose Navarro for your management of that progress, and thank you for the taxpayers who are supporting those funding. I'm very excited that this is Department of Transportation, Bureau of Transportation easement rather than a parks easement. This is exactly the kind of thing that I think we should be looking at the right-of-way and public easements to provide things that recognize that pedestrians and people who use wheelchairs and others are also entitled to spaces that are multifunctional. So I think it's terrific that it's a P-Bot easement and that the developer will be maintaining and monitoring the space. So congratulations to all the partners. Bye.
I had a chance to walk this project earlier in its development, and it really is a visionary piece of work, and I appreciate all the partners coming together to actually make it happen. Thank you very much. Bye. Okay, let's move to regular agenda, item 552.
Proclaim May 8 through May 15, 2016 to be Taiwanese-American Heritage Week in Portland.
I'm very pleased to have this proclamation before us and invite Amy Chao and others who want to speak about this to come forward. I'll read the proclamation, and then we'll hear from you and other community leaders that are here to talk about this today. It says, "Whereas America has been continually renewed and enriched by the many different people who choose to come here and become our fellow citizens, and each brings a part of his or her own heritage, which over time becomes part of our common heritage, and generations of Asian-Americans have helped make America what it is today; and whereas there are more than 500,000 Taiwanese-Americans in the United States with a significant Taiwanese-American population in Portland; and whereas on August 14, 1945, the people of the United States received word of the end of World War II; and whereas Taiwanese-Americans have made enormous contributions to the diversity and prosperity of American society, consistently contributing to the promotion of democracy and security of their homeland; and whereas Taiwanese-Americans have succeeded as successful and notable artists, Nobel laureate scientists, researchers, human rights activists, and business leaders; and whereas Taiwanese-Americans can be proud of their roots and their vital role in the continued growth of our nation; and whereas 2014 marked the 35th anniversary of the enactment into law of the Taiwan Relations Act, which is the cornerstone of U.S.-Taiwanese relations; and whereas the United States provides safety and security guarantees to Taiwan for the preservation of its democracy; and whereas due to American support, Taiwan's voice is heard while it strives for participation in international organizations such as the World Health Organizations and the United Nations; and whereas this week recognizes the longstanding friendship between the United States and Taiwan during this special week, Taiwanese-Americans are able to embrace America's diversity and celebrate the spirit of community that brings us together as one nation. Now, therefore, I Charlie Hales, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, to hereby proclaim May 8 to May 15 to be Taiwanese-American Heritage Week in Portland, and encourage all residents to observe this week." So let's hear it for the partnership between the United States and Taiwan. Of course, here in Portland, we have an amazing sister-city relationship with Kaohsiung, and many of us have had a chance to visit Kaohsiung and welcome delegations here every year for the Rose Festival. One will become, a big delegation will be coming soon, so it's a longstanding friendship. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners and Mayor, for proclaiming again this year Taiwanese-American Heritage Week, which just happened. We had a very exciting event at the Portland Center.
Put your name in the record, I'm sorry.
Yes, my name is Annie Chao, Chao Ying Chao. People call me Annie. And again, we just had a really, really wonderful celebration at the Portland Center for the Performance Arts, and it was a sold-out show on a Tuesday, so hopefully next year we'll be able to invite all of you as special VIP guests to enjoy the show. And I wanted to echo what you said, that it's been a longstanding relationship between Taiwan and the United States, especially Portland and the Kaohsiung City Sister Association. And also, Taiwan is a sister state to the state of Oregon, so it's really, truly an honor for the city of Portland to proclaim this special week for us Taiwanese-Americans here in Portland. I've been here in Portland since 1996. I went through the Portland Public Schools system, and so for me, it's really an integration of both of my cultures right now. And currently, I serve as the chapter president of Formosa Association for Public Affairs, which is a country-nationwide nonprofit grassroots organization with over 50 chapters, and what we do is we advocate for democracy and self-determination for the people of Taiwan and DC and then all over the country. And this week is really a special week, especially because we just had the inauguration of the new president, Dr. Tsai Ing-wen, in Taiwan that just happened. So we hope to continue this relationship between Portland and Kaohsiung, Oregon and Taiwan, and to continue to be a visible group of community members here in Portland. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jeffrey Chan. Very honored to be here, Mayor and the Commissioners for the City of Portland. I've been in Portland since 2000. I have lived, worked, and played here for the last 16 years, and I'm very honored to be here and very, when I show my gratitude and appreciation for the recognition for Taiwan and the sister state and sister-city relationship. As the Mayor had mentioned before, there are 500,000 Taiwanese-Americans here in the United States, and there's thousands of us here in the City of Portland. City of Portland is known as a unique city, it's known as an innovation hub, and there's a great relationship between Taiwanese-Americans and also the state of Taiwan and also in Oregon, in Portland. If you think about the industries that thrive in this region, high-tech and also sportswear, companies like Nike, Adidas, Columbia Sportswear, companies like Intel, Mental Graphics, they will have a great relationship with Taiwan and Taiwanese-American talents. And so it's been that I'm an Taiwanese-American myself and being here for 16 years, again, I want to show my gratitude and appreciation for the longstanding relationship and the recognition by the Mayor and the Commissioners today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both very much. We appreciate you being here. We'd love to take a photo, if you'd like.
That would be great. Thank you.
Please. Thank you all. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, let's move on into the next part of our regular agenda, then that would be item 553.
Accept bid of Brown Contracting Inc. for the 20s Bike Ways Northeast Lombard to Southeast Crystal Springs Project for $2,499,143.
Okay, Ms. Moody.
Christine Moody, Procurement Services. You have before you the procurement report recommending a contract award to Brown Contracting. The engineer's estimate on this project was $1,963. On March 1, 2016, two bids were received. The low bidder was found non-responsive to the DBE goal, therefore Brown Contracting as the second low bidder is the awarded contractor at $2,499,143.46. The Portland Bureau of Transportation participated in Oregon Department of Transportation's Local Public Agency Certification Program for the delivery of federal aid projects. Part of this certification is that ODOT administers the disadvantaged business enterprise program and establishes the DBE goal. This project was determined by ODOT to have a 7% DBE goal, and Brown Contracting was determined by ODOT to be responsive. I will turn this back over to council if there are any questions, and Rich Nulands from P-Bot is here to answer any technical questions.
Christine, the one question which I guess you're expecting us to raise is, the initial estimate, which was a moderate-level estimate in terms of confidence, was just under $2 million, and the winning bid is 25% over that. Anything we've learned in terms of either the estimating, or the market, or any other aspect of this, because that's a pretty substantial...
I'll have Rich come up and address that.
Pretty substantial gap.
And why only two respondents, I guess?
Yeah, Rich Nulands, Portland Bureau of Transportation. We can only speculate that it's a matter of what the state of the market is right now, that our bid estimates are not keeping up with the market, and the fact that there's only two bidders reflects the tight market that we've been experiencing lately.
I saw the head of the Columbia Pacific Building Trades nodding when you were saying that, but are we confident that, excuse me, that we've done sufficient outreach to get all the potential contractors bidding on this?
I believe we have, yes.
And actually, Commissioner, looking at some information I have in front of me, the original estimate was from October 20, 2015. They updated the estimate just right before bids, so it is what Rich was saying, it's just the ever-changing market here.
Very tight market, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you both. Anyone else want to speak on this item? If not, then a motion, please, accept.
So, Moody?
Second.
Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Bye.
Salzman.
Bye.
Hales.
Well, I think it's not a formal conflict of interest, but I live on the 20s Bike Way, and I'm going to ride the heck out of it, so I'm really glad that this project's getting constructed. Bye. Thank you. Okay, I believe we should take 554 and 557 together, is that right?
Thank you, Mayor.
Read this, too.
554, accept guaranteed maximum price of $152,181,850 from Hoffman Construction Company for the construction of the Washington Park Reservoirs Improvements Project. And 557, authorize a 1% dedicated fund account and authorize the chief procurement officer to conduct solicitations and execute agreements in support of the community benefits plan for the Washington Park Reservoirs Improvements Project, not to exceed $1,145,500.
Okay, Commissioner Fish.
Thank you, Mayor, and colleagues. Today, we are poised to take another big step forward in preparing our water system for the big one. The Washington Park Reservoir Project has been before council on numerous occasions in the past as part of discussions of our federal LT2 obligations, in the context of land use decisions, and in connection with the Water Bureau's budget and current rate proposal. Most recently, we held a work session last fall to update you on the design, and today we ask you to consider the final council actions.
we ask you to consider the final Council actions necessary before construction begins this summer. There are two items before you today. First, a report asking the Council to accept the guaranteed minimum price for construction and to award the contract. And second, an ordinance to authorize 1% of construction costs in support of a Community Benefits Plan. Here to present on these two items are Christine Moody, our Chief Procurement Officer, Mike Stewart, the Director of the Water Bureau, and Teresa Elliott, the distinguished Chief Engineer of the Water Bureau. Who do I turn to first?
Christine.
Christine, welcome.
Oh, Christine Moody, Procurement Services. As the Commissioner stated, the action before you today is the acceptance of the guaranteed maximum price of $152,181,850, and the award of a contract to Hoffman Construction Company. With me are Mike Stewart, Water Bureau Director, and Teresa Elliott, Chief Engineer. We will talk today about the technical aspects of the project, the procurement process, equity contracting goals, and the 1% community benefits.
So I thought first, I might go through a little bit of history on the project and-
Why don't you introduce yourself?
Excuse me, Mike Stewart, Water Bureau. I thought we might go through a little bit of the history of the project and kind of refresh our memories from the September presentation last year. This project is extremely important to the city, particularly the west side of the city. It serves more than 360,000 people, 20% of the retail customers of the city of Portland, and a whole bunch of our wholesale customers. We are expected to start construction on July 1. That's a regulatory date in the LT2 agreements we have made with our regulators. Where the project sits, up on top of the hill there, it's a critical point in our city's infrastructure. You can see it above the city, and it provides the water for the downtown. For background, this project has been a long time in the making, beginning in 2008. We came in brief due in September of last year, 2015, and went through the project in detail. At that point, it was at 90% design, and we're here before you today with the Community Benefits Plan and the guaranteed maximum price from our contractor. The project is key for seismic resilience. We need to be able to provide water to the city in the event of a seismic event. And from the picture I showed you, you'll recall that the Portland Hills Fault there, it's not just the Cascades Abduction Zone earthquake that we're concerned with, but it's also the Portland Hills Fault, which is a magnitude-six capable fault. It's the hub for water on the west side of the city. It serves three hospital complexes in the downtown core. The downtown core of the city generates about $8 billion annually in revenue, and it's also a historical landmark. The area served by Washington Park, you can see in the slide above, that includes the Good Samaritan Hospital, the OHSU Hospital Complex, and the VA Hospital Complex. In getting this project done, we went through more than three years of outreach, worked extensively with community up in the vicinity of Washington Park. We partnered with a citizen committee that helped us design the above-ground features of the project, held many tours and meetings, and nine large meetings with a community sounding board that we convened to help us guide the project. The site challenges, as we discussed last September, are large. It's in an ancient landslide, weak soils on top of bedrock, which is typical for the area. The space is limited, so that gave us a design challenge. We looked at many options in designing this project, other places that we might put it. We're restricted by elevation. We have a gravity-fed system, and elevation is key. And our conclusion, after looking at all the options, that it was best left here. The challenge you can see is the landslide and the earthquake that you know about. We've done an extensive amount of work to pin down our site conditions. We've done over 46 borings in the immediate vicinity of Reservoir 3 and 4. For a typical tank, you might do six or seven. We've done big test pits, do what we call pull-out tests. We'll show you a picture of the pilings, but a pull-out test is you drive the pile, and then you put a big jack on it, and you try and yank it out of the ground. And the reason is, in a seismic event, you get compression and tension, and you want to make sure that we're getting all the soil force that we need to get to hold the tank down, essentially. Reservoir 3, specific challenges. I think I explained this the last time we talked about it, that we're basically building two projects. We're building a very simple tank, a big fat concrete box with lots of steel and rebar, and then we're building a fort around it, a second building almost, to deal with the landslide and the seismic events. And now, I'm going to turn it over to Teresa to talk more about some of the technical aspects.
I'm Teresa Elliott, Portland Water Bureau Chief Engineer. I'm going to actually cover the next couple of slides fairly quickly, since we have covered them in the past. In Reservoir 4, we're going to be restoring some of the original ground to help stabilize the landslide, and then use some of the basin of Reservoir 4 for our onsite drainage and overflow for the reservoir that is being built.
Do you think that slide has an exaggerated vertical scale? I hope so.
Probably.
Looks a little bit like Glen Canyon there.
Yeah. In Reservoir 3, we will, there is a number of retaining walls that Mike mentioned, and support systems that need to be installed before we can start building the reservoir. And then, we also need to build a flat workspace on the east side of the existing tank for the equipment to go back and forth. Reservoir 3 has been designed using the current building code and seismic codes, and will increase the Bureau's ability to continue serving water for years to come. This is just another view of the different retaining wall systems that are being put in. The area that's in green is the buffer that's being put in between the existing landslide and the water reservoir. And the blue area in the middle is where the new reservoir will be sitting at. Mike mentioned that the, where it's a box within a box. This is what the original reservoir was envisioned to look like, and this is what the reservoir looks like with the additional box around it to protect it. So there's, you know-
You know, just, I've used the word fortress, because I think what we're really doing is creating a, building a fortress around the reservoir and in order to protect it. And this slide tells you what, how much work has to be done to actually fortify it.
So at the 90%, we told you that it was $170 million. At that time, I was expecting my construction contract to come in at $140, plus or minus some, and I had a low to moderate confidence level. We are now at 100% design and have a negotiated construction contract of $152 million. And so, I have adjusted my numbers and included the Community Benefits Plan that we're also going to talk to you about. And my revised overall project budget is $190 million.
In the September event, we said that we were going to be plus or minus 20% when we presented the $170 million number. And what we're at right now is 11% above the $170.
Thanks, Mike. Some of the reasons for the cost change are because we are now at 100%. And we have, we've refined our design, gotten into some more of the details that weren't fleshed out at 90%. And we're seeing changes in our construction market, so we've had to adjust our prices for the labor and materials escalation for this going out to 2024. And then, we've added some contingency to it to make sure that we don't have to come back to you. Project schedule, we have a couple of compliance dates that are coming up, actually, three compliance dates that are coming up. One, we told EPA that we would be in construction by July 1 of this year, and that we would have the Reservoir 3 completed in December of 2019, and Reservoir 4 completed and disconnected in 2020. We are currently on schedule to meet that. And then, the overall project schedule is to be completed in fiscal year '24. Christine.
Okay, so I'm going to just kind of go through the procurement process. As Mike and Teresa have mentioned, this has been a three-year-plus timeframe for us. So in December of 2012, City Council approved the use of the alternative procurement method, construction manager, general contractor. The RFP was issued in October of 2013, and in November of 2013, three proposals were received. There was a selection committee of five members from Portland Water Bureau and a minority evaluator, and the selection committee selected Hoffman Construction Company as the highest-scoring proposer. In April of 2014, the city entered into a pre-construction services contract for $1,359,980. And for this early work, Hoffman has already identified FM Birch and Associates, DBE Contractor, O'Neill Electric, MBE Contractor, PLI Systems, MBE Contractor, Star Construction Services, WBE, and IQ Traffic Services, which is a WBE. So they are at 26.68% of the total contract for the DMW businesses. As Council knows, the Water Bureau has had two pilot projects where the CBA Community Benefits Agreement was part, on those two projects. And the subcontracting goal on those two projects was 22% of the hard construction costs, with 12% disadvantaged minority and women percentages. In this current project in our Community Benefits Plan, we have the same 22% of hard construction costs, but the 12% is disaggregated. And it, or all of the goal is disaggregated. 12% minority, 5% women, and 5% emerging small business. The workforce diversity goals for both apprenticeship-level workers and journey-level workers, there's a 31% apprenticeship requirement of, and 22% minority and 9% women. There's also a journey-level goal for 28%, which is 22% minority and 6% women. Hoffman will also be required to meet the city's 20% apprenticeship requirement. So the difference is in this, is we are disaggregating the percentages for subcontracting as well as having goals for apprentice-level workers and journey-level workers.
In addition to the report to Council that's before you, we're also bringing, have the ordinance for authorizing us to do a, 1% for Community Benefits Fund. And this would authorize us to spend the 1% of the reimbursable construction costs on things like technical assistance, workforce services, support for minority and women, subcontractors, and individual workers on the project. The Water Bureau will manage the funds directly and oversee how and where the funds will be spent. We're forming a Compliance Review Committee that will review the performance in meeting the Community Benefits Plan and advise the Bureau on how to spend the 1%. And the committee is expected to have members from the Water Bureau of Procurement, Contractor, Maui Building Trades, one of the building, one of the pre-apprenticeship training program groups, and then hopefully another minority contracting group. Yours.
So I wanted to talk for a minute about the Community Benefits Plan itself and how we got it, because I know that we've had a report released on the CBAs, which were the pilot projects that we ran. We think that we have answered, in a very good way, the criticisms that we heard in the analysis of the Community Benefits, not Community Benefits Agreement. One of the principal ones was a potential for conflicts of interest. In our Community Benefits Plan, we're going to have all the players on the Compliance Review Committee sign conflict of interest statements, so that should take care of that. To further ease concerns about conflicts of interest, the actual disbursements of funds will be done by a committee of city staff individuals. So the Compliance Review Committee's job is to monitor compliance, make recommendations, and so on, but the actual choice to disburse city funds is going to be made by city employees. Behind me, we have, I lost track, six or seven folks who worked for weeks, eight weeks, actually, on developing this Community Benefits Plan. They included Matt Momshimer, Kelly Haynes, Willie Myers, Mike Birch, Maurice Romming, Andrew McGough. We began this process in January. Commissioner Fish met with a group and charged us with getting together and developing a Community Benefits Plan. And there's a lot of people to thank for that, besides the folks I named, but I'd also like to thank Commissioner Fritz and the Parks Bureau. We grabbed their Community Benefits Plan and used that as a basis for our document. So anything that's wrong with our plan is not Commissioner Fritz's fault or the fault of the Parks Bureau. It's all our own. We met for two months, every Friday, for at least two hours with a group of folks I named. It was not easy. It was difficult. There are probably things about each one, that each one of us don't particularly care for about this agreement, but we made reasonable accommodations to end up with a Community Benefits Plan that I think we can all live with and that will deliver, I believe, $1.1 million worth of benefits to our community. So thanks again to Matt, Kelly, Willie, Mike Birch, Maurice, and Andrew for coming in. Not everybody made every meeting, but almost everybody made every meeting. On the city side, our team included Christine, myself, Teresa Elliott, Molly Washington, whom I think is sitting back there from the city attorney's office, Tracy Reeve from the city attorney's office. So we all sat down in our big conference room, and we worked our way through this agreement, answering each other's questions, explaining, and arriving at the accommodations that we arrived at. I'd also like to thank one other person here who's still here, I think. Catherine Beaumont, sitting over there on the side, is our land use attorney, and that's very important to this project also. Barring that, I think that concludes our presentations. We can answer your questions, and then I'd like to let our partners in negotiating the Community Benefits Plan come up, and they each have, I think, something they'd like to say.
Sure. So, are any members of the Community Review Committee, or whatever it's called?
Compliance Review Committee.
Compliance Review Committee. Are any of them being paid for their participation on this committee?
No, no paid.
Okay.
And I think we've got almost all the committee members nailed down already, but-
So maybe, just sort of for general information purposes, I mean, there's two items before us. One is the construction contract, and the other is the Community Benefits Plan. Back to the construction project itself, it's gotten a little larger in cost. It's now a very, you know, it's a $190 million project. The plan shows that it is requiring, maybe heroic is a little bit over the top, but heroic measures to build a reservoir on this site. Are there, you know, again, I know you looked at alternatives in terms of elevation, but comes a point in the project where you, you know, you could reconsider. Are there any other legitimate options that might cost anything less and work as well?
We don't believe so. We checked their sites several times in the last 20 years, and all of them had very similar problems fraught with the same issues. And then, this morning, I actually got a report from one of my staff people, and they said that even in 1904, American Society of Civil Engineers evaluated the site too. And they said that, yeah, that there's, there are other ravines in the area that have similar characteristics, but none of them are more accessible or apparently more favorable as a reservoir site. And we still think that holds true today. It still works- problems fraught with the same issues. And then this morning, I actually got a report from one of my staff people, and they said that even in 1904, American Society of Civil Engineers evaluated the site too. And they said that, yeah, that there's, there are other ravines in the area that have similar characteristics, but none of them are more accessible or apparently more favorable as a reservoir site. And we still think that holds true today. It still works for us for the distance where our infrastructure's at and where the elevation of the reservoir is. We would end up having to do the same kinds of protection of those sites in ravines. And I have not assessed costs, but I think that the cost would be at least as much because we'd have to move our infrastructure to those locations.
Part of the challenge here, well, there's a couple, is one, we have to have the elevation we have because it's a gravity system, and the only way around that is pumps, which jacks up the price of water from now until forever. So we don't want to do that. We're stuck with the elevation. If you look out across that hillside, it's all high-value land. Because we're located on a hillside and it's a seismic zone, much of what you see in our pretty little pictures is going to be required no matter where you put it. And then you have the problem of big pipes coming in and out that would all have to be moved and joined up somewhere else. So you're going to be putting in miles of large diameter pipe. We just think this is the best option, and we should proceed.
Okay, thank you. Other questions at this point?
Mayor, I have one invited panel.
Okay, please.
And we'll move this along. Thank you if you could stick around to answer any questions that come up. I'd like to invite Maurice Romming, President of O'Neill Electric, Andrew McGaw, Executive Director of Work Systems, Inc., Kelly Haynes, Senior Project Manager of Work Systems, and Willie Myers, the Executive Secretary-Treasurer of the Columbia Pacific Building and Construction Trades Council. If the four of you would please come forward. We've got the four of you for now, Willie. And I want to thank you for not only scheduling time to be here today, but for your participation in this process. I think Mike Stewart said it best when he said that in good faith, the various sides sat down at the table with the goal of promoting opportunity and advancing our MWE SB goals. In fact, one thing I think we can collectively be proud of is we've set very aggressive goals in this Community Benefits Plan. But also, we had the benefit of some experience under the pilots, and we had the benefit of at least one independent review that sent some red flags. And collectively, we tried to improve on what is a bedrock principle of this council about promoting opportunity through these projects. Thank you for your service, and Willie, why don't you kick it off?
Sure. My name is Willie Myers. I'm the Executive Secretary-Treasurer of the Columbia Pacific Building and Construction Trades Council. Thank you, Mayor Hills and Commissioners, for allowing us to speak to you today. It was definitely a challenging process that we sat down with the Water Bureau staff to discuss this. I think we came up with a good policy in the plan itself with some pretty aggressive and good numbers for workforce diversity. With contracting diversity being an important component, DBE contracting goals are important. Workforce diversity is crucial to reaching out to a larger community and a much broader community with the benefit of employment on the public projects to the underserved population of our great city. Working with partners in our city with a track record of success to set the benchmarks in our plans and provide and employ only contractors that draw from the most diverse pool of qualified workers to provide construction services for our city is important. I think that the method or the plan for delivery might be absent from the plan, and so I think maybe we need another level of or type of an agreement to figure out how to bring that delivery, not necessarily with the city, but the responsible parties that are actually responsible for the delivery of that, figure out a way to accomplish that.
Thank you. Andrew McGaw.
Thanks, Commissioner, members of the council. My name is Andrew McGaw. I'm the Executive Director of Work Systems. I'm also actually a member of the Equitable Contracting and Purchasing Commission, as well as a member of the Metropolitan Alliance for Workforce Equity, otherwise known as Maui. And I actually am one of those guys that only was able to attend one meeting, the first meeting, but I do think it was a really, I think the expectations were set out front, and it was clear that we were all there and genuinely interested in trying to figure out how to move the needle on some pretty complicated and challenging issues. And I think that's really where I wind up in all of this. I think there's a big interest, but the challenge is really in how do we do that? And from a workforce perspective, you know, I think we do need to get to a place where we systematize how we approach these projects, and I do think we need to think more broadly than the city. It's great that you guys have some projects, but so does Metro, so does Washington County, so do others in the region, because we need to solve and we need to address the issues today, but ultimately, from a workforce perspective, it's about how do we create a continuum to build the pipeline to make sure that we have the diverse workforce of the future and that they have those critical opportunities to go from project to project, because that's really how you transition from an apprentice to a journey-level worker. You have to have opportunity to work, and it's the same on the contracting side. To go from a subcontractor to a prime contractor or an owner requires an extended period of time and work. And I would just encourage that we think not only about the immediate, you know, projects in front of us, but also understand that we need to be in this for the long haul. This is going to take time. These projects didn't, or these issues didn't emerge overnight, and it's going to take some significant time for us to address the issues and make sure that the workforce does adequately reflect the community and our values in making sure that people have the opportunities for these great jobs. And I guess the only other thing I would say, as it relates specifically to this plan, as the Director of Work Systems, which is the Workforce Development Board for the city of O'Neill and Washington Counties, we bring a lot of capabilities and capacity to the table. We're a partner in these efforts, and I really hope that the city begins to view us as that and not necessarily just sort of another one-off organization who's out there and thinks about this occasionally. Last year, we trained more than 1,000 people, most of them low-income, highly diverse populations. We have a partnership with you right now with 700 low-income peoples called the Economic Opportunity Program, where we want to make sure that those people have connections to these kinds of jobs. And we're making investments to get them ready to be successful in a pre-apprenticeship program or in apprenticeship, and making sure that those are connected, I think, is essential to moving forward on these plans and agreements or whatever we wind up calling them. So thanks very much, and I do thank you, Commissioner Fish, because I do think you set the vision that we need to continue to stay at the table, to think about this, and to continue to have the dialogue that we're going to need to really address a really challenging situation, but also one that offers a tremendous opportunity to the community. So thank you.
And for the record, we view you as a full partner and as a great resource.
Thank you.
But that, obviously, we need to deepen that relationship, and the oversight function about this particular plan, which is a further refinement of an ongoing experiment, is going to require all of us at the table to get it right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Maurice Romming is the President of O'Neill Electric. Welcome. We see your side.
Have Kelly go first, is that what you want?
All right.
There's a microphone right there. You can just grab it if you want.
Reese has just waived his time in the interest of time. Thank you, Maurice.
There's a button on the base of it there.
Kelly Haynes is a Senior Project Manager of Work Systems, Inc.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. Yeah, my name's Kelly Haynes. I'm at Work Systems. I also staff the Metropolitan Alliance for Workforce Equity, which is a broad coalition that was formed in 2011, made up of community, labor, training, and equity partners. So thank you for having us today, and thank you to city staff, the Portland Water Bureau staff, the attorney and procurement staff in working with us over the last two months. It was truly a positive and productive process to get to meet regularly, to talk about the Community Benefits Plan. On the Washington Park Reservoir Improvement Project, I think the overall experience built trust and goodwill. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, it's just a little flaky.
Okay. And we are interested in continuing to partner with the city along those lines to develop a meaningful template that includes all necessary components in the future, and we are happy to work toward that end. So the process was very positive. I think we still have concerns about the ability of the Community Benefits Plan to achieve the stated equity and diversity goals, because we see it as still lacking key mechanisms and delivery tools for success. And namely, a signatory component with all responsible parties. We saw ongoing throughout this process was something that we continued to bring up and push for in order to make it successful. And we believe that without that key mechanism, the policy may struggle to deliver real impact for the community. But we do applaud the Water Bureau and staff for engaging and improving the plan as much as they saw was possible with their perceived constraints. But without a plan for delivery, we still see that it could run into some challenges in the future. And we believe that building upon the successes of the CBA pilots and continuing to figure out what does that formula look like is going to be critical, both on this project and on future projects. So overall, we think the experience was a positive one, and it's important that we continue to refine it with the lessons learned from the CBA pilots. But for this CBP, I think we worked as hard as we all could to get as far as we could. And from Maui's perspective, you know, it was a really good experience, and we also still want to continue to work with you to course correct over the life of this project. So thank you again for the opportunity to provide input and recommendations, and we do look forward to continued work together.
Thanks very much, Kelly. Maurice, welcome.
Well, thank you. And I'd like to also thank the city staff that we work with. They really tried to work and make sure that our needs are heard. But again, we feel like this is a good first step, but it's just as a first step. We need ongoing policies and ongoing things to actually make sure that inclusion for women, minorities in the workforce is actually upheld. So I think that there are several things that we could continue to expand on as we look at other projects. And I think that the CBA, I think some of the things that we weren't able to get there with the CBP, I think mainly because of time restrictions, but again, I thought that city staff did a great job trying to implement as much of it as possible. But I do feel like we need to have the continual dialogue to actually weed out some of those things that could improve the utilization of women and minorities, not only in the workforce but in contracting, that we know have a proven track record of success in making sure that we have that collaboration between all the partners to make sure that they're participating in a meaningful way, whether it be signing on to agreements so that they have buy-in and involvement, and that all programs and all groups have at least a seat at the table to actually have some meaningful impact. Thank you for your time. Again, I'd like to thank city staff for actually inviting us. One thing I would say is I would like to see on the advisory committee a representative from the ECPC. They were lacking there, and I'd like for you guys to amend that so that they have a voice at that table as well, as far as the committee that was established in the Community Benefits Plan.
So let me get you to elaborate a little bit, because you've all been pretty clear about the concern about the lack of the delivery mechanism or implementation for the goals in the plan. I met last week, of course, with the ECPC, and you're working with, the ECPC is working with the Office of Equity and Human Rights on some of these issues in terms of regional efforts. What would you say, you know, how do we close that gap, that delivery or implementation gap that we, using that term corporately, you know, the role of the ECPC, the role of the bureaus and the purchasing office, you know, in moving forward on projects? How would you suggest that we close that delivery gap?
I'll touch on it first, Willie Myers again. I think with the Oversight Committee or with the Compliance Committee, if they have access to the data for the project that they need to identify whether or not we're achieving the goals set forth in the plan, and to have the ability to course correct is one of the biggest pieces, having meaningful oversight of our achievements on the project, as well as having the responsible parties that are responsible for the delivery of what we're, of the goals we set forth in the plan, have some sort of signatory relationship with either the city or the general contractor to ensure that they're taking responsibility for it and agreeing to comply with or attempt to comply with the plan that we've set for.
Willie, let me just engage that for a second, because one of the refinements here is that the LMCOC, the Labor Management Committee Oversight Committee, that was tasked with essentially having a unique level of independence in overseeing the contracting and expenditures, is being replaced by the Bureau re-establishing its historic role of being in charge of that process and ultimately accountable. So what we're talking about is, just to be clear, we agree collectively that someone has to be accountable, and we've established even more aggressive goals in this contract. The difference is it is squarely on the, the accountability falls squarely on the shoulders of Mike Stewart, Christine Moody, and the city folks, not on a LMCOC, which, by the way, based on the report we got recently, there's a lot of issues that get raised by creating such an entity, including are they public officials, what are the governing laws? Can you actually do that kind of contracting? So it does be, I just want to be absolutely clear. The commitment to accountability and to achieving our goals is there, and we have all made that commitment. The Oversight Body, the CRC, will be monitoring, will be getting data, will be helping us do, as you say, course corrections. And the other piece I want to put on the table is, the council is going to get a report this summer, I think, hopefully this summer, on the final numbers and outcomes under the CBA on the two first pilot projects. So we'll be able to assess, on those projects, did it make a difference, and if so, where? And then what are some of the additional lessons learned? And it is our collective intent to continue this conversation, because it's still a pilot, and we're still refining it. And the next CBP on the next big project, we'll incorporate some of our new and up-to-date thinking. But I just want to be clear, because the mayor's raising a very important question. The accountability piece here is squarely on the shoulders of city leadership, and as I believe where it should be. And you, both as the members of the CRC and the community members, have a right to hold the Bureau accountable for reaching those goals.
One thing I'd say on that is the LMCOC did more than just the 1%, those funds. I do agree with you that that should fall squarely on the city. What the LMCOC did that was critical for its success is it had the community partners be able to feed to the pre-apprenticeship programs, then were able to feed into the apprenticeship program, then were able to move people into construction jobs. And I think that's a critical component, and being able to understand and be able to see those monthly reports that showed whether a contractor was failing to utilize the minorities and women as far as on the workforce. We were able to then help that contractor meet those goals by supplying them with that diverse workforce, mostly on the subcontracting level. But I think the LMCOC played a critical role in making sure that we exceeded those goals. And goals are great, but if you don't have a plan to achieve them, and you don't have the right players in the room. So what the LMCOC was able to do is align those industry experts, align those community folks, to be able to get a large diverse group of people to enter into these programs and actually be successful at it.
That's a good point, and I know we're going to have another hearing on that whole process, so I don't want to just get too off-track on this one. I wanted to follow up with Commissioner Fish on Mr. Romming's request to have somebody from the Equitable Contracting and Purchasing Commission on the committee. Would that be acceptable?
I would hope that was the intent, but certainly, I think that's a good suggestion.
Thank you. I think it would help both ways for the commission to know what you're doing here, and it is an iterative process where, as Commissioner Fish says, we all have the same goals, and we want to figure out together how to work on them. So thank you very much for your time.
Other questions for the panel?
That concludes the presentation, the invited panel, and whoever in the public is here to testify.
Yep, so thank you all very much. We appreciate your working together.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
And working with city staff on this. So there, again, there are two items on the calendar. People are free to come up and testify on one or both. One's the construction contract, and the other is this plan that we've just had described. So I don't know who you have signed up, Carla, but we'll take...
Two people signed up, Charles Johnson and Dee White.
Okay, come on up.
I live at 3836 Southeast 49th. Mayor Hales, commissioners Mr. Miller and Mr. Russ, who I don't think are in here. I'm adamantly opposed to moving forward with the Washington Park Reservoir Demolition Contract Award to Hoffman Construction. This demolition decision is in litigation, as council is aware of. This is an offensive bullying tactic by our lame duck mayor and our unethical dishonest commissioners on behalf of their crony contractors, and most importantly, the city's own profit center, the Water Bureau. These crony contractors, politicians, and well-held city employees are simply not going to walk away from this much money, no matter the cost to ratepayers in terms of their physical health and financial security. It's all about money, winning, and vindication, not health, not safety, not leadership, not good governance. The retail ratepayers, not the wholesale ratepayers such as Hillsborough, the retail ratepayers—that would be water users, large like the Hilton and small like myself—are looking at being held responsible for paying $152 million. Now I hear it's $190 for a likely future boondoggle in Portland's Crown Jewel Park, and we're as mad as hell about it, not to mention being fearful for the public health and safety of ourselves and our children. We're looking at shredded streets, including Burnside and all of the streets in Washington Park, dirty diesel truck pollution from 30,000 dump trucks, six years of road closures, vibrations, shaking, noise, pollution, not to mention destroying the functioning open reservoirs based on false and unsupportable findings by our mayor and city councilors. Currently, the Water Bureau is $610 million in debt, add another $152 million plus millions, most certainly guaranteed in overruns, and we're looking at at least $762 million in debt and even more in debt service that the ratepayers will be responsible for once this contract is issued. Rate increases in perpetuity will be the legacy to our children from this 15-year debacle of unnecessary infrastructure, construction, and pet projects, courtesy of our mayor, our city council, and our Water Bureau. Citizens are challenging in the courts this stupid irrational decision to demolish our open reservoirs. It is reckless and irresponsible for the OMF to be putting forth this enormous contract at this time. Please do not continue this process until it is settled in the courts. It's what the citizens of Portland want and deserve.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Good afternoon. I probably should have just recorded the prior testimony and played it back. It's quite succinct and to the point. In the consent agenda, we passed about $30,000 to study heavy metal air pollution dispersion. Every time we talk about environmental quality and regulation in here, the issue of diesel also comes up. So even though everything that was said in the previous three minutes is right on point and critical, I do want to ask if there's any provision in this $150 to $190 million boondoggle for clean diesel contracting. I realize that we're also trying to support minority businesses, and there's been some contention about this point, about the ability of minority contractors to get access to clean diesel fuel vehicles and reducing diesel particulate emission and the cancer risks associated with that. But I think that that is, you know, one tiny sliver of additional factors along with Raydon, Joe Glicker, excessive money channeled through CH2M Hill, or maybe they've dropped the hill now. But I do appreciate the engagement with the neighborhoods who are less vehement about resisting this guaranteed price, no overruns project. But as is pointed out, you know, if there's litigation—we don't have Scott Fernandez here talking—but, you know, many people think that we don't need to burden future generations of Portlanders with this certain or uncertain cost. So I really believe that you'd be showing better leadership if you do not pass this at this time. Thank you.
So, Mayor, just as a housekeeping matter, so today we're asking you to act on the guaranteed maximum price contract. The Community Benefits Plan would come back to a second reading. I would note, just for my colleagues' benefit, that we have been on and off talking—been talking about this for a long time. We have just concluded a budget process where the pub and the cub both blessed our five-year capital spending plan and the proposed rates. And there has been mention of litigation involved in Washington Park, and as my colleagues know, at the Land Use Board of Appeals, Mr. Fernandez's claim was denied. It's on appeal. Our attorneys feel very confident of our position on appeal. And we are under a regulatory agreement that requires us to move forward, and that's what's now—this, by acting on these matters today, we would be staying faithful to the timetable that we're operating under, following a very exhaustive community project. And I would note that we're working closely with the Arlington Heights neighborhood, who has given their support for this project.
So I think you move the report.
Well, I'll let one of my colleagues move the report then.
I move the report.
I have a conflict.
All right. Well, no, you don't. You're the commissioner in charge. Is there a second? Go ahead. All right, then let's take a vote, please.
So this is a really significant day for the city and for the Water Bureau, Mayor, and I want to just thank a few people. I'd like to start with the Water Bureau leadership team and the engineers, led by Mike Stewart and Teresa Elliott. They have designed a solution to an almost impossible engineering problem. Congratulations, and thank you. They were presented with an ancient landslide, a fault line, a registered historic district, and a federally mandated timeline, and somehow they came up with a solution, as they always do. I'd also like to thank all the community stakeholders who have faithfully engaged with the bureau and the city staff to develop a Community Benefits Plan, which we'll not be voting on today. And to my friends who are here today, we heard you loud and clear about where you think we still fall short. This is an evolutionary process. Our goal is, at the end of the day, we expect to be measured on outcomes. And we had the discussion this summer about how do we do on the pilots? My colleagues are going to scrub the numbers to see where do we move the ball, and if we didn't—if we didn't reach our goals, why not? And what can we do differently? Because we're deeply committed to this work. And Mayor, I think the suggestion that we at some point broaden our lens so this is a regional approach and not just a city approach is a wonderful suggestion. We are deeply committed, though, to opportunity and equity, and it is reflected in the proposed CBP. And I am very appreciative of the comments which the invited testimony people said about the collaborative spirit in working with the Water Bureau. We can agree or disagree on issues as they come up, but that kind of mutual respect and engagement is what's going to sustain us on the long haul, and I thank you for the comments you made about the bureau staff. Colleagues, I believe that these two matters, one of which we'll vote on today, represents the best of our values: a commitment to strengthening our system, ensuring high-quality water, preparing for the big one, and improving opportunities for women, minorities, and other disadvantaged groups. I want to thank Liam Frost, who has been leading this effort on my team, and as many of you know, recently became a United States citizen. And I want to thank Sonia Schmansky and Jim Blackwood for their work. And I want to thank my colleagues. This has been a long and winding road, and we got there together, and I think we did it the right way, and today I'm proud to vote aye.
Well, in addition to adding my thanks to everybody that Commissioner Fish noted, and thank you especially to the community partners, we are definitely, I believe, on the right track of working together. So once we're working together, then we can find the right outcomes. But it hasn't been easy. It won't be easy, and so we're going to have to continue to improve on each iteration. I thank Commissioner Fish for leading not only Environmental Services but also the Water Bureau and bringing the two utilities into public awareness and by explaining every step of the way what you're doing and why. And that has resulted in a lot more confidence in the community, a lot less angst over rate increases and the purpose of the matter before us today. And that's due also to a lot more public engagement by bureau staff, and I very much appreciate that. Of course, not everybody agrees, and some of us didn't get what we wanted at certain stages, and yet you accept what is to be, and then you make the best of it. And I think this is making the best of it. In particular, it's making sure that when—I don't really like to call it the big one, it sounds like some kind of fast food offering. But when a big earthquake hits, that we will be ready, and that the West Side will have water, and that's essential. So thank you very much, and thank you for your partnership also with parks. It is in one of the jewels of Portland's park system, and we very much appreciate the way that you've worked, not only with parks but also with neighborhood involvement in our diverse communities in Portland. So thank you very much. Aye.
Yeah, thank you. This is a big commitment. It's got to be done right. I'm confident in our engineers for their evaluation of what those alternatives are, but it always is important to measure at least twice and cut once, especially when the cost of the project is like this. I'm not interested in inhabiting an alternative universe in which the city of Portland doesn't have to comply with federal law or rules, whether that's the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Department of Justice's requirements for the police bureau, or the LT2 rule. So we need to do this as we have proceeded with the rest of our system. We need to do it right, and we need to do it in the right place and do it well. On the subject of involvement of minority contractors, a subject that we've been talking about at least as long as we've been talking about the LT2 rule, actually probably quite a bit longer, I met with the Equitable Contracting and Purchasing Commission last week, and I reiterated something to them that I want to say here again, and that is, I am agnostic about means. I don't—I don't know exactly what the right tools are to get to effective implementation of the goal that everybody in the room shares. So I don't have a favorite tool. I just want the tool to work, and I have no interest in appearing to make progress on this issue. I am only interested in actually making progress and having it be sustained. So I want this conversation to continue, and for criticisms of what's not working to be clearly heard and addressed, and for new ideas to be considered, truly considered and tried out. You know, one thing that we've been doing lately in city government, whether it's putting cones up on NATO Boulevard or, you know, how we hire people, is we try things, and we see if they work, and if they don't, we try something else. So please, those of you who work on these issues, you know, keep both the clear-eyed criticisms coming. Insist that there be internal collaboration between bureaus and leadership and the community, whether it's involvement of the Equitable Contracting and Purchasing Commission on this project or not, any of those things. It's all legit. So please, I hope you know that all of us are committed to the goal and will try things until they work. So let's continue that. Finally, there was a mention in passing here about clean diesel, although we shouldn't necessarily load that mandate on this project particularly. I think it's really important that we look for ways that we, as a city with a climate action plan and an air quality problem, look for ways to improve both our fleet and the fleet of the private sector that operate in our city and the fleet of our railroads that are completely exempt from most city regulation, because this is a concern, and there are hundreds of people who are afflicted, and some of whom die in our city because of asthma that's triggered by diesel particulates. So this is a serious issue. It needs to be addressed, and I certainly want to direct the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability staff that are responsible for actually getting our climate action plan done by all the bureaus to think again and anew about how do we do that, because we need to do that as a city, for our health's sake as well as for our climate's sake. So again, not necessarily particular to the contracting requirements for this project, but this would be a great place to start, whatever the next stage of that overall effort is. So thank you all for good work. Aye. And then the second item, we'll pass to second reading.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you all very much. Okay, let's move through the rest of our regular agenda, please.
Is it your intent to go continue the rest of the—
I think we're going to be able to get this done by 1 o'clock. I'm hoping that that's not just wishful thinking.
And that would help me, Mayor, because I have a meeting out of the office. If we could—
Okay, let's take 555.
555, amend intergovernmental agreement with Portland State University for the Hatfield Fellows Program for Training and Leadership Development to update the amount per fellow to $40,000 and increase the contract by $800,000 for fiscal year 2016-2017.
Sure if we have a presentation on this item or not. I don't think we do. Does anyone want to speak on this item? Okay, is Commissioner Fish still in the room because it's an emergency ordinance? Yeah. I know we probably have some people think, but here he is. Okay. All right, we're taking a roll call on the Hatfield Fellows thing, and it's an emergency ordinance.
Aye.
And let's continue with the roll call.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Hale?
Aye. Okay, 556.
Approve fiscal year 2016-17 cost of living adjustments to pay rates for nonrepresented classifications and elected officials, specify the effect upon employees in the classifications involved, and provide for payments.
Second reading, roll call.
Fish. Mayor, I'm going to support this. During the recession, I and a number of my colleagues did not take a COLA, in keeping with the fact that we were asking other employees to take shared sacrifice. But I will vote aye, which will authorize a 1% COLA for nonrepresented classifications and elected officials. But following the lead of my friend Commissioner Fritz, I'm also pleased to report that we are projected to return about 5% of our office budget to the general fund this year, which will be put to good use. Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Yes, I think we had a friendly bet, Commissioner Fish, as to who was going to return most money from our office, and so we'll have that discussion.
I think you're going to win.
So yes, we spend taxpayers' money wisely, and I'm very grateful to the voters for telling me that I deserve to have this job at the current rate. Aye.
Hale.
Twice the price. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
Item 558, amend fee schedules for building and other permits and site development.
Roll call.
Fish. Dan, thanks for your leadership on this and also for proposing that we actually reduce some fees based on the revenue projections during this remarkable run of real estate development. Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I want to thank the bureau and the Development Review Advisory Committee for helping to shape a fee schedule that actually reduces fees on average by 3%. So, great move. Aye.
I share the commendation for the Bureau Development Services staff, and also thank you, Commissioner Saltzman, for accepting the amendment last week, making sure that mobile home—manufactured home parks continue to be supported by the citizens of Portland. Aye.
Hale.
Thank you. Aye. Okay, item 559.
Accept a grant in the amount of $96,999 from the University of Utah for Pay for Success Innovation Fellowship Program to advance the City of Portland Green and Healthy Homes Initiative.
Roll call, vote, please.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I appreciate the Portland Housing Bureau for searching out this opportunity to promote green and healthy homes. Aye.
Fritz?
Thanks to the University of Utah. Aye.
Hale.
Aye. Okay, item 561.
Revise transportation fees, rates, and charges for fiscal year 2016-17 and fix an effective date.
Vote, please.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Hale?
Aye. 562.
Approve the designation of six trees as City of Portland Heritage Trees and remove the heritage tree designation from two trees.
Mr. Fritz?
Thank you, Mayor. As the Commissioner in Charge of Portland Parks and Recreation, I'm happy to introduce this ordinance to add to our City of Portland Heritage Tree Inventory by formally designating six trees as heritage trees and unfortunately removing the designation from two trees. The Heritage Tree Program is an integral component of raising public awareness of the important contribution of trees. It's been going since 1993. There are currently 290 heritage trees in Portland, representing 125 unique species. And I am happy to welcome Greg Everhart from the Urban Forestry Commission, who has led the Heritage Tree Committee's selection process, and will provide a short presentation, and Jen Cairo, our city forester.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if the presentation is going to be projected.
Oh, she's—
Did you send it? Did you know who you sent it to?
It was sent by Megan Dirks.
To who? Who did she send it to?
To you, I believe.
Are we missing a—
We may have to go with—
Powerpoint? Find it, Carla? Uh-oh, nobody's got it on a memory stick.
I might be able to pull that right now here.
I might be able to pull that right now here.
Ah.
Did you get the PowerPoint as a printout? Have you?
Let's see if we did.
Oh, my goodness. It's literally like seven slides, but they have the pictures of the trees.
I can pass it down.
All right, we can refer to the paper copy then. Why don't you proceed and we'll refer to the paper copy because they're here.
Well, Happy Belated Arbor Month. Normally, we, this process to select heritage trees takes about a year. We like to present them to you in April so we can include them and, you know, celebrate the actual people who've nominated them during the Arbor Day celebration. But you guys have been really busy and we appreciate actually how much of your time has been spent on trees this year. So, we will get any of you that don't have the PowerPoint, the pictures. I am really sorry you don't actually see these trees because.
We're sharing.
Okay, they're very remarkable. And if you accept them, they will get their plaque and it'll actually then be against the law to remove, destroy or injure them. Some of them are public trees, street right of ways and parks, others are private trees. Those private owners are actually bound to care for the trees and can't take them out without permission. And I'm sorry you're not seeing these pictures sort of tree by tree, but one thing I do want to mention is the size of these trees. The slides show their height, their spread and their circumference because those are the numbers we use for heritage trees. But because you've been talking about DBH for trees, the diameter, breast height, for each of the trees, I'm actually going to translate that and you may have to actually go back and look at it later. But I, as a landscape architect, am always interested in how long it takes a tree to grow. And so, literally, if we take down a 25-inch tree or 30-inch tree, how many years of growth is that? In some cases, we've got neighborhoods that have never had heritage trees and so where this is the first or second heritage tree, I'm going to mention that because my goal, chairing the committee, among my goals is to actually get a heritage tree. Excellent, a miracle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carla.
And how do I move it forward? Great. So, those are the six trees and the first two are actually dawn redwoods. Now, you can have a heritage tree be large or old, historic significance, a place, a person, an event, or it can just be a horticultural interest. Some of these trees actually have two or more reasons. Dawn redwoods were a tree that were thought were to be extinct and these are actually some of the earliest trees found in this country once people started collecting and exchanging the seed. This also represents a tradition that we're losing in Portland. That's the neighborhood nursery that had specialty trees. So, these, the 10-acre nursery that was here lasted 90-some years. It had four generations, two generations each in two trees. The first tree here is 27-inch DBH and actually, I got to say, we're all about the same age. This tree is 61-years-old. So, just 27 inches, but obviously its height is pretty significant. The second one is 34 inches and you see there, for those of you who have the proper sheet, the woman, Karen Erickson, she's the daughter of the second family, so the fourth generation and she nominated this tree. So, again, historic significance internationally and then locally. Coast redwood is another kind of redwood. Obviously, both the redwood varieties can grow centuries. And if you look at the number for the coast redwood, it's a 68-inch DBH. It's clearly older, but again, this is a different form of tree. It's got a real trunk flare. This is in University Park neighborhood. It's a landmark on the Peninsula Crossing Trail. Its height and the fact that it's sort of in a clear area means it's a significant landmark for this neighborhood and pretty much any people who use the trail. The next tree, the Mount Fuji flowering cherry, it's unusual. These trees don't live as long. Many of our flowering trees are smaller statured. We don't talk about them as much because they don't give some of the big environmental beniments. This tree was actually passed over the previous year. The Heritage Tree Committee did not recommend it move forward to the commission and to council. But the neighborhood sent us a petition and they made it very clear that this tree is a landmark for Mount Tabor. It would be that neighborhood's first heritage tree. This picture I took in March, it's spectacular every year, every part of the year. It's a sculpture in the winter, it's got great fall color. It shades three different lots because it's actually wider than it is tall. I actually see this because my mother lives somewhat nearby. It's not going to live as long as any of the other trees that we've got, but it's important to this neighborhood and it's, in its own way, sort of precedent setting that a more ornamental, less functional tree is honored. And I think what was particularly important to this neighborhood is they saw this as a tool, preserving the tree would help preserve these homes. These are the homes in inner southeast and northeast that are really vulnerable to being replaced and that'll be very difficult to do if this is a heritage tree. And the current owners would like that protection for the trees' sake. Second to last tree is actually a native tree, the Oregon white oak. This tree is actually our most common heritage tree. We've got about two dozen of them and you think, well, why do we need another one? Well, this one is actually particularly spectacular. It's not the biggest nor the tallest or even the widest, but it's unique in that it's got these multiple trunks. And we think it's actually several different trees. You know, the squirrels didn't come back to their acorn stash. They sprouted, grew, blended together and it's actually too big to actually take a picture of in its entirety. There's no direction where it's not blocked by other trees, but it's a real feature in Fern Hill Park. Last tree is a madone tree, another native tree. And the story here is both the horticulture species, it's native, but it's rare in Portland because it likes hot, dry, well-drained places. You would normally see this on the bluffs along the Willamette River, like above Oaks Bottom, something like that, where it just is really hot and dry. This is a straight tree and the woman who is hugging her tree actually transplanted this when she was a child. So, again, this tree is about our age. It came in July, which is not when you transplant trees, and she's stewarded it this time. This would be the Foster Powell neighborhood's first tree, heritage tree, and it was discovered by the city during the straight tree inventory for Foster Powell. So, that are, those are the six nominees and we can answer questions about them or anything else in the ordinance.
Tell us about the two trees that are being removed and what's that process and is there anything to be concerned about there?
Well, I personally am concerned that the grand fir was cut down without a permit. It, there's a whole long story and I know we were given five minutes, but it was literally killed. The Japanese red pine actually is along 39th, just near the Co Circle Park, and I think it just suffered eventually being in that setting, the hot, dry planting.
They're removed from the list because they're gone?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Normally, there might be storm damage and something becomes unstable. We have some warning and we can delist it.
Oh, but the reason I raise the concern is you just mentioned this one cherry tree where it's part of a preservation strategy. So, we have a giant loophole in our historic preservation process where people can de-designate their properties. So, if I have a heritage tree on my lot, can I just de-designate it?
No, no. We'd have to come to council, just like everyone else.
Okay, Mr. Auerbach, comments on this?
Yeah, under the code, delisting a tree requires a unanimous recommendation from the Urban Forestry Commission and approval by the council.
Would that it were so for historic landmarks. Thank you.
Although, cutting one, the fine is currently only $1,000.
Yeah, we hope to bring that up in the next round or one of those near rounds of tree code amendments.
Okay, good. Thank you. Questions? Thank you both very much. Appreciate both the presentation and the work.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Anyone else want to speak on this item? If not, then this passes to second reading.
Thank you for your presentation.
563.
Authorize contract with Kemper Sports Management, Inc. for management and development at Coldwood Golf Center.
Mr. Fritz.
Thank you. We have Trang Lam to present on behalf of Portland Parks and Recreation and John Zoller is also here for questions about the golf course.
Good afternoon.
Do you want me to do the spiel that I was given as well?
I can do it.
Okay.
All right, I will just, we'll be quick here. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner Trang Lam, Property and Business Development Manager. John Zoller is our golf director. In 2014, Parks purchased Coldwood Golf Center at around 76th and Columbia. It is approximately 40 acres. It's a nine-hole par three with a driving range and a clubhouse facility suitable for staging events. Since that time, we've actually had an interim contract with our contractors that provide us management services at Heron Lakes that provided us time to do a full public procurement process. We completed our procurement process for this management agreement in March of 2016. Three proposals were received and deemed responsive. A selection committee that was appointed by our Parks Director has determined that the proposal submitted by Kemper Sports Management is the most advantageous for the city and has made recommendation to our director and our commissioner in charge toward the contract with Kemper Sports. The management contract before use, a five-year contract, was a option to renew. The management services generally includes development of a business plan for Coldwood, including marketing and outreach to our communities. And the outreach part is important because this is an opportunity for the smaller golf course that's in a very diverse community, for us to actually get new golfers and also golfers that haven't been exposed to this type of sports before from our different types of communities out there. It also includes management of the clubhouse, restaurant and pro shop, and then we also have a starter and marshalling service for the course. The management fee under this contract would be $60,000 a year plus an incentive fee. The incentive fee is about 10% of any positive net operating income, just from the food and beverage operations. It's expected with the projections that we have right now, that incentive fee can range from $5,000 to $15,000 annually, so it's not a huge chunk of money. Authorizing this contract with Kemper Sports is projected to bring in about $6.27 million in gross revenues with projected operating expenses of about $5.82 million over the next five years. This will net us around about $450,000 for operating income for this contract. And that's it for my presentation. Any questions?
I had just one. When it was, when Kemper presented their proposal, it included having lottery income and so I asked that there not be allowance for lottery machines at the clubhouse. Does the contract, as revised, specifically call that out and say that there won't be any?
The contract does not call out that there won't be any, but does not, but it also doesn't call out that we are expecting to have some. So, we've actually have left it that we aren't asking them to put any in.
Would they have to ask us if they wanted to put something in?
Yes, yes. So, our business plan on an annual basis needs to be approved by the Parks Director.
Besides, it was news to me, not being a golf player, that some of our other courses, in fact, do have lottery machines in the clubhouse and so I'm going to be looking into that.
Is there any provision in this agreement for ensuring that there be healthy food options as part of the food service?
We don't specifically have that, but we can definitely have a conversation with them as we're developing the business plan for this facility and others.
Yeah, a few years ago, you know, we started asking our partners that used park spaces for festivals and for events that they have a healthy food option. Obviously, we're not telling people what they have to buy or eat and we know there's a big audience out there for snow cones and for cotton candy, but we sort of required that there be a healthy choice. And I'd like to just put that marker down that whatever food service, there's a healthy choice, whether it's a salad or a locale or something, as we move towards promoting healthier lifestyles.
Great idea. Thank you.
All right, other questions or suggestions? Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone want to speak on this item? And I understand it was actually filed as an emergency ordinance but not noted so on the calendar, is that right?
Correct. We left off the asterisk. But it is an emergency.
I move an emergency clause, Mayor.
It already has one. The asterisk was just left off.
It's just a typo, so we don't have to take a motion. We could just vote on it now. Let's do it.
Counsel, just before we do that, I want to call to your attention that John Zoller is going to be retiring and thank him for his service.
How can that be?
Am I correct on that? I keep telling people that parts of people are retiring.
I hope it's true.
Did I do it again?
It wasn't a hint.
First Commissioner Saltzman and now you. We're fully surprises here.
Everybody's retiring and not being told. All right, let's vote, please.
I'm not a golfer. When I was younger, I used to caddy, but I understand that it's a sport that people love and I'm proud that the action we took years ago preserved this opportunity at Coldwood and I'm pleased that you're moving forward with a model that ensures that it be a self-contained business, as golf is, and offers more choices to people who love to play golf. So, congratulations. Aye.
Saltzman.
Good work and congratulations to Kemper Sports also for doing a good job. Aye.
I'm very excited about the new model for Coldwood and I do thank John Zoller. I'm getting very tired. We've been here for three and a half hours now, so. However, you don't often come to council and yet you do a lot of great work managing our golf courses and so I really appreciate the work that you do. Thanks also to Trang Lam for her excellent work on contracting and procurement services. Very proud of our Parks team and look forward to having a new kinds of golfers coming to Coldwood and already the communities, the clubhouse is serving as a community center for the Cully neighborhood and so that's very exciting. Aye.
Hales.
Four. Okay, 564.
Amen Park System Development Charge Capital Improvements Plan to update the project list.
Roll call, please.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Fritz.
Thank you. I believe that this capital improvement plan affirms that council has considered these project costs of the improvements. Obviously, it's a broad list of possibilities rather than a absolute to-do list that we're going to start in on tomorrow. It does make, ensure that we have the full range of capital projects on the list that could be eligible and also indicates whether they would be fully, partially or not eligible for system development charge funding. So, thank you. I look forward to the new system development charges going into effect on July 1st, which will enhance the capacity of Portland Parks and Recreation to accommodate growing park and recreation needs of our community. Aye.
Hales.
Aye. Thank you. And we are recessed until Thursday at 2:00 P.M.
You're right, we've got done some flex.
Just that we might be trying for 1:15 or.